We are really on time here, so we're gonna get going here. Uh, welcome everyone. This is the school district of Prescott's regular meeting. Uh, we are, we've been in closed session since five P M. So we are now on item five, pledge of allegiance. Uh, Vicki, would you care to lead us here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next item is recognition of visitor. So would anybody care to be recognized here? Yep, yep.
You come up here to the guy.
So if you can come up to the podium, just state your name and, and the group that you're representing.
All right, can everybody?
Yep, here, yep, here.
Can everybody hear me all right?
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Uh, my name is Matt Farren, the president of Prescott Wrestling Club. I'm here to make comment on behalf of the Prescott Wrestling Club. As I walked up here, I hit send on the copy of my comments for you guys if you'd like to read along. Uh, good evening, Mike, and to the rest of the school board. Thank you for allowing us time to take comment here tonight. I'm specifically here to talk about the roadblocks and the red tape that is causing challenges of our pre K through fifth grade youth practicing in the high school wrestling room specifically. As I wrote the words for tonight, I kept asking myself, why? How do we get here? And to those questions, I still don't know the answer. But my hope is after today, our volunteers can just move beyond all this and take the time they give to our community to focus on the youth wrestling season. Instead of red tape and roadblocks, paying for use is not our issue. We have money to offer every year to the high school wrestling program, and we do that every year. Insurance to cover liability is not a problem. We'll chill here in my comments. Our problem is not having access, our problem is not having access to the only viable wrestling room in the district that is open at the time we're requesting it. The Prescott Wrestling Club is one of the more formidable youth wrestling clubs in the area by numbers and levels of talent, and we're not shy to say it. We have ninety registered girls and boys in youth wrestling program from pre K to fifth grade. We also have deep ties to the middle school and high school wrestling program, like our Facebook page and follows this year. You'll see some exciting stuff. Our club offers opportunities for youth, boys and girls in the district to get off technology for a few hours each week to work on becoming more athletic and purchase paint with a team. It teaches our athletes the following important charis- characteristics that are spelled out with the words card, cards on the back of our shirts. Courage, attitude, respect, determination, and success. We also teach them how to lose respectfully. The sole purpose is not to make excellent wrestlers, although we hope it does. Our goal is to help kids be better overall. Wrestling helps athleticism for all activities a kid wants to pursue in their life. Do a little research on the benefits of a strong wrestling program. You may be surprised by what you see. The sport of wrestling helps young people develop important qualities such as self-esteem, sportsmanship, work ethic, and leadership skills. Wrestling is the world's oldest sport, teaches control, not violence. Since nineteen seventy-seven, the Prescott Wrestling Club has operated within the district as Prescott's youth wrestling program in partnership with the district. Five of the last six years and since I have been on the committee, Prescott Wrestling Club has operated and its practices Tuesdays and Thursday nights during the season. And has put on one of the best youth wrestling tournaments in the area, the Border Battle, all of which have taken place at the high school with cooperation and partnership of the administration. We have followed all the rules and any guidelines that have been put in front of us by anyone from the administration. Now I'll lay out the timeline of what we'd faced this year and are still facing as our season has started, just to get access to our normal practice space, which is the only viable wrestling room in the district. Rewind to August of this year, we approached the administration as we always do with plenty of time before the season to make the same request. Tuesday and Thursday, youth practices in the high school wrestling room and a heads up on a potential date for our February tournament. We also were requesting some time early in the fall for open mat nights in the wrestling room. On August fourteenth, I sent my normal email to the athletic director. I got the following response the next day, which gave me a bit of concern. Good afternoon. The district has a new process to reserve space. You'll have to follow the link below. I put a request in a while back to flip the doors from the weight room to the wrestling room. I have not heard anything back yet. Any access to the weight room creates too much liability to the district. You can proceed with your facilities request in the meantime. A C. That was not a normal response that I had gotten in years past, more vague, more standoffish than how we're usually approached, but I could work through it. Until there came references that the high school wrestling room could not be used at all. I immediately asked for a discussion with the athletic director face to face, which we did after the middle school cross-country meeting in the high school late summer. During that discussion, I heard things like new process, liability, can't use the space. Before we finished that discussion, I said, what if we take care of the liability with insurance? And the reply I got was a vague statement saying, sure, we need to cover the liability. But it turns out that's good news for me and the club on a few fronts. I've worked in insurance my whole career. I knew we had coverage as a chartered chapter of USA Wrestling that protected us, and I even recall that there's a way to add a different entity to cover them as well. Which is indeed what I wanted to do. We would take care of that liability for the school and the district, and I wanted to get on it right away because we were looking to have some open mat nights in early September. On August twenty-second, right after our meeting, I emailed the certificate of coverage and asked if anything needed to change. On Thursday, the twenty-fifth, I got my first reply, which was vague and just checking the box. I followed up three more times and I finally received a response three weeks later, and this is what I heard from, um, the athletic director on nine sixteen. I met with Rick and he is supportive of the wrestling club purchasing insurance to cover the liability of the weight room. This would not mean the weight room could be used, so we would ask the club to have someone able, available to ensure the equipment was not used. But the insurance would cover the district and allow the wrestling room to be rented. So we have somebody who would volunteer as a district member to watch the, watch the weight room, which we had decided to do. That was great news. I could get the certificates updated that I already have, send them to him. We'd be in a good spot, a little bit of back and forth, but we worked through it. Cool. I gave the copy of the certificates, which was the new, which according to the new facility rental agreement is what is required, which is the certificates. I, I hear the following back three weeks later on ten ten. Good evening. Our legal counsel requested full insurance policies for the wrestling club. They also requested that this policy would cover any team or athlete at the tournament you host here. Best, A C. I replied the next morning, we are insured through USA Wrestling and have quick access to the certificate here, but it will take longer to get the full policy. What are you missing in the certificate that you would want to see in the policy? Is there someone I should be talking to directly to expedite this? Here are both of the certificates, one for the Prescott Wrestling Club and the others for the Prescott High School to cover them. We would get coverage on top of this for any specific event like our tournament. Thank you. I get a brief, non-sympathetic reply saying I can forward this on, but I, I believe our legal counsel would like to see the full policy. I continue to ask, is there someone else I can talk to directly? The athletic director says that I can't do that and I have to work through him. I assure him that USA Wrestling is a large organization with forty-three hundred chartered clubs, most of which operate with this coverage in school district facilities. Next, I have to communicate with the USA Wrestling leadership in the state of Wisconsin and their insurance company, and they say no other club has ever asked for the whole policy. I tell Andrew that and ask why there are so many hurdles, and I get the response again, vague, unapologetic, and nothing to do with the cumbersome process we're following. He says, I'm communicating with what our legal team and insurance company need. Due to the activity and the location of the space, outside organizations have to go through a process to ensure the district does not have any liability. While all this is going on, we're trying to, different things like offering whole harmless agreements. Because it's mid-October now and the season's getting close, we don't want our season to be delayed. All with short, unapologetic responses from Andrew like, due to the nature of the activity and the location being a respectful, uh, requested, there is an in-depth process. On ten twenty-five, we finally got USA Wrestling to forward the full policy to Andrew. I follow up because I saw that it was sent. He says it went to his spam folder, so he did not see it, and he'll send it to the district office. On ten twenty-eight, ten days before our first practice, after two months of back and forth and finally getting all the insurance certificate and policies, which no one else has to provide, we get a revised facility use agreement from Andrew. As I laid out in the email I sent to you all last week, it had glaring issues that clearly made it difficult for us to use the wrestling room. When on nine sixteen, his comments were that if we covered the liability, we could use the high school wrestling room. And then, of course, the months followed and we went through the long drawn out process. If needed, I can send the school board all the emails to back up the timeline that I just reviewed. Our practices started last week on Tuesday, November eighth. Last week went well, besides a little bit of water from the rain getting tracked in through door nine, which is what we have to use now. More ideal would be have the wrestlers enter through door seven, take off their outside shoes and proceed with supervision to the wrestling room through the weight room, which is what we've always done. Where they stay until practice is over unless they need to use the restroom where they'll be chaperoned to the restrooms in the front of the school, because there's a stipulation in the contract that says we can't use the locker room, which we've always done and found a way to do. The biggest issue came this week. We had to switch to Monday night since there was a girls' basketball game on Tuesday. We only had fifty of our ninety wrestlers attend because of the schedule change. I've talked to Rick a couple of times this week and I still think the point is being missed. The point is that there's no reason the Prescott Wrestling Club should not be practicing in the high school wrestling room. It's the only suitable wrestling room in the district, which is open at the time we're requesting it. Again, why? How did we get here? I can only come to a conclusion that it's one of two possibilities. The new requirements were made without consideration of the downstream impacts they'd have on our youth. And even, even now that it's clear that the requirements are limiting and unnecessary, those who made them are choosing not to change them. The folks who create, or number two, the folks who created the requirements knew exactly how limiting they would be, and that's why they put them in the revised agreement. One of those two things have to be the situation. We have been told now a few times that the high school basketball teams come first. We agree that it's the high school. But us being in the wrestling, wrestling room could impact their preparation? I'm wondering if that is how the high school basketball coaches feel. I wonder how the, they would react to the fact that the administration is using that statement as one of the reasons we can't be in the high school wrestling room. Wonder what they would say to that? This is a small community. We need to work together on using the facilities that are available and the best for all of our needs, not putting restrictions and red tape where they don't belong. Remember, these volunteers that run the Prescott Wrestling Club and other nonprofits in Prescott are the same people that P C R in the school call on repeatedly to volunteer to support their programs. Let that one sink in. Why would the administration choose to alienate them? Many of you, you up there are those volunteers as well. To close, our ask of you today is to immediately reinstate the Prescott Wrestling Club to be able to practice on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the high school wrestling room after the high school wrestling team is done practicing those evenings. Tuesday, six to eight fifteen P M., Thursday, six to seven thirty P M., and to help us remove barriers to get our twenty-twenty-three Border Battle booked on the dates we have requested. Again, we appreciate your time this evening and we hope for swift action given we started all this with plenty of time three months ago in August. But due to administration misleading us and drawing out the process, the season has now started and we're already impacted. Thank you.
Matt, thanks for, thanks for sharing that with us. Um, we've been in contact, so I, I'll, I'll continue to work with Rick and the board's up to, up to date on now, so we appreciate it. Hopefully we can come to a resolution that works for everybody, right? So that's what we're here to do. So I appreciate you having the comments and taking, taking the time to do that.
Can I just add to, I didn't get any of these emails, cause I just.
Yeah, I, I got it.
My email or anything.
I just got it. Okay, yeah.
Sorry about.
I'll get it. No, that's fine. I'll, I'll get it from that.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, not at this time. I think we're gonna probably have to take it offline, so. Uh, is there anybody else in the audience that would care to be recognized that is not related to the wrestling club? Comments here. Thank, thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Hi.
I'm not sure if this is the proper time to address. I, I'm looking at your.
You, um, state your name and.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Todd Langenfeld. I'm, uh, resident of Oak Grove. I've been a, uh, taxpayer in the district for fifty-two years. And, uh, nineteen seventy-seven, I was there when the Prescott Wrestling Club started. Believe me, we were there. For those of you that don't know, I was involved in the, uh, the high school as an instructor for eight years from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-nine. I also coached the golf team. I coached the football team. I ran the intermural program. Uh, let's see, I had lunch line supervision. I had six classes, five subjects, and I made thirteen thousand dollars a year. That's why I'm glad you guys aren't superintendent in those days today, because if you guys have been there, I probably would have stayed and I'd be just as damn broke as I was.
I gave them ten minutes. I gotta, I gotta cut it back.
I got it.
We got a long.
I, I, um, I'm here, uh, to speak tonight, uh, about the, uh, the tax situation. Uh, and the, is, is, I'm somewhat confused as to the, uh, the amount of assessments that's being taken care of on the, uh, uh, of the school portion of the property taxes. And as I, I've been reading the Prescott Journal, and it shows that the amount of, uh, taxes on the situation goes from, uh, down from ten twenty-three to eight thirty-seven per, per, uh, for thousand dollars of taxes, which on the face is good, but I'm wondering, uh, seeing that since there's been a reassessment going on. And in Oak Grove, there with the average assessment in Oak Grove went up sixty-five percent. The average assessment in Clifton, I believe, is up sixty-five percent. Uh, I had the honor of having mine go up eighty-two percent, and I want you to understand, I'm not complaining about paying taxes. I'm for it. I, I paid my taxes. Hell, I've been backing you guys while you guys were still in diapers for Christ's sake. I don't know if you know that, okay? But I'm concerned about the fact that it appears that, uh, the, the, um, the perception is, is that the taxes are going to be going down. And if I do my math right, if you've got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house now and the assessment came in at sixty-five percent higher, um, that would be, that would be the following. A two-hundred-thousand-dollar home at ten twenty-three, your taxes at two thousand forty-six dollars. A two-hundred-thousand-dollar home now at sixty-five percent higher, which would make it three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Uh, at eight thirty-seven, your taxes are twenty-seven-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. In other words, it's an increase of seven hundred bucks. Now, I'm not saying you haven't got it coming. But what I'm asking is the perception out there is that the taxes are going down. And the city council of Prescott is meeting for all of you here now on the twenty-eighth. And they're going to be, uh, discussing their new budget. And one of the things that they've said, of course, is that they're going to be raising their portion by ten percent. And the answer, uh, on that, if I can quote the, uh, the, uh, journal here is that, uh, it was noted that because Prescott School District cut its taxes this year, it could have an effect where the overall city resident tax bill will be similar to a year ago. Overall, it would stay flat because school taxes backed off this year, said older person Pat Knox. I'm, I, I'm just trying to understand, um, are you, yours gotta be going up, and the perception that they're getting is that they're going down. And when you get a sixty-five percent increase on Prescott's going to be reassessed, and the, the days of, it, it, it's, they're gonna go up sixty-five percent. I mean, you can't have the, the townships go up sixty-five percent, not the city. So consequently for, if you got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house in Prescott right now, with this reassessment, you're gonna be assessed at three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, which means that your taxes are going to go up seven hundred bucks. Now, I'm not saying that, I'm not complaining about taxes going up, but what I'm saying is that the perception is, is that they're not gonna go anywhere. And I'm just wondering if you have been in contact with the city on this. Uh, I understand, I've talked with, with the superintendent a couple of times on, on this, and like I said, I, I, I'm with you. I, I'm not complaining about it, you know? I, I, you know, I, I feel like a Model T Ford in a Tesla dealership here, being the, uh, being the old timer here, but it's, um, it's something that, that, that bears consideration. And could you, I, I understand that you can't answer it now, but maybe you could, can you tell me, could you tell us what I'm missing here? What are we missing? If you have a sixty-five percent, you know, sixty-five percent increase, and that's happening. And, uh, and the rate comes down, but it goes down on a smaller amount of money. Um, nobody's gonna stay the same. It's, it's going up whether you, whether we want it or not, but the perception is, is that it's going down. And the perception is, you know, I don't want to see you get, get kicked in the, get kicked in the hind end, uh, in, in a couple of weeks. And I was just hoping that a lot of you that are here may want to show up at the, uh, Prescott City Council's meeting, which is going to be, uh, on the twenty-eighth to discuss their budget, because they're under the impression that, that everything that they can jack, there's ten percent, and it's not gonna affect anybody. And it, it, that doesn't seem to be the case. It doesn't seem to be the case. I had one other thing, if I may, or is it, I know you're, I know you're busier than hell.
Yeah.
The last time I was here was a couple of years ago, and I was quite concerned about the fact that you were accepting money from the National Rifle Association or the friends of the National Rifle Association. And I asked you to give the money back. Since that time, a couple of years, there have been more massacres in schools across the country. And the reason me, and by people that have, I have access to weapons of mass destruction, which many of us have tried to get outlawed to at least your twenty-one or not even have them outlawed. And it continues on. And I'm, I, I'm just very concerned about the fact that, um, how, how that goes on. And I'm very concerned about the fact that it seems as though that the, there is no answer to it, except for banning these damn things and getting them away from everyone. My question, and, and again, I, I understand the privacy and things like that. I really, really do, but it could happen here. It could happen in Ellsworth. It could happen in River Falls. Hell, it happens in the Twin Cities. Do, I know you can't reveal it, but please have a plan where this happens. I, I personally don't think the Prescott Police Department is equipped to handle anything except speeding tickets.
We, we can talk with you, Todd, on that if you want. We, there's.
Okay, so. Thank you, Mike, for your time, and I appreciate it. And if I could just get an answer on the, the situation, on what the assessed valuations and assessments is gonna be. It would, it would really be helpful, especially at the city council meeting in a couple of weeks, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to be recognized? All right. We're gonna move on to good news, number seven on, on the list here. We go into Ryan. We're gonna start with Ryan and our student council rep.
Um, all right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So the main thing that the student council has been doing lately that we've been putting a lot of our focus on is we're trying to plan another Native American logos protest. Um, similar to the one that they did with T-shirts when Zach Simenas went here years ago. Um, and so we have met with leaders such as Barbara Munson and other people that have a lot of knowledge in that subject area. So that's our main thing that we're doing lately, and as always, we're doing things to up student morale. Currently, we're planning Snow Fest for the winter. Um, but yeah, all of that will continue into December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gonna have our administrative team come forward? Or start with the high school and Mr. Figgy?
I'll go really, really quickly here. Um, last week, we were fortunate enough to have a student-led middle school, high school, Veterans Day assembly. Um, and I think we had about twenty-six veterans in attendance and their families, and, um, it was completely put on by students, all student speakers, musicians, everything. So it was really nice to have that happen. And then, as I saw the Halloween, um, scroll through with the parade, um, the parent committee at the high school put on a, a Halloween event for younger students, um, grades four K basically through six. And we had about a hundred and fifteen people who showed up to that throughout the course of the night. Two movies, a treasure hunt put on by, um, Yachik Burkowski. Um, that was pretty popular, so that was a lot of fun as well, just trying to keep the engagement with the community high. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Rick Montreal.
Yeah. Rick Montreal, dean of students at the high school. Um, as a follow-up to last month, I wanted to mention our student inclusivity group again today. For the second of three lessons, went to Malone Intermediate School to work with our fifth graders. Uh, this afternoon's topic or theme was centered around healing your feelings. Uh, the lesson goal was to highlight healthy and helpful ways to deal with strong emotions. Feedback I've heard so far on this project has been really positive, and I think both the high schoolers and the fifth graders are enjoying the partnership. Uh, the second quick highlight, uh, is based on some Prescott High School data that was shared with the board this past summer on behavior. I want to share that we have seen a significant decrease in behavior referrals so far this school year. Um, and that aligns with our building goal that we set forth during our data dig, uh, in August. I'd say even though it's fairly early in the school year, we are trending in the right direction while reducing, with reducing behavior incidents and referrals. And our focus continues to be on positive character traits and student relationships, and I'm hoping we can continue to build on that momentum. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, first and foremost, I would like to congratulate Jonathan V. Goot on his first band concert that took place since our last meeting. Um, anyone that was in attendance, um, it, it just, it was a great concert. Um, it's the first one that he, he's ever got to put on as a professional, um, and that he was the director for, so congratulations to him. Um, thank you to Mr. Figgy and the high school for allowing our middle school students to, uh, participate with them and help put on the Veterans Day program. Um, as Mr. Figgy said, it was a, a great program, and our middle school students and high school students did a great job of, of speaking and, um, performing and putting on the program for our veterans. Um, my real plug tonight, though, is going to be for our middle school musical that is coming up on December second, third, and fourth. Um, if you haven't purchased tickets already, I would suggest, especially if you'd like to go to the Friday or Saturday show, to, um, start purchasing tickets. All ticket sales, you can, um, go online, um, to the middle school homepage and purchase directly online. Um, I do know that the tickets are selling fast and we are starting to fill up. Um, so, um, good luck to all of our Beauty and the Beast, um, cast members, um, and Ms. Kohulick and Ms. Metamiral, um, our two directors.
Sarah Dusick, Malone Elementary Principal. Um, you can see the pictures from the Halloween parade, um, which was another hit again this year afterwards. Um, Dr. Spukuz and I were texting back and forth, and I said, it's just ten minutes of pure joy. Where the students and staff just love it. The community, it's soulful when we walk our little path. It's just well worth the ten minutes of joy that it brings. Um, I'd also like to just mention Brittany Camrath has been doing a K-five junior choir program, um, at the elementary building. It's very popular. There are lots of kids jammed into that room for junior choir. They've been practicing on Tuesdays and tomorrow night, they have a concert here at seven o'clock at the PAC Center. Um, so if you don't have anything going on, it'd be something that you could attend. And then next week, we have our annual Turkey Bingo that is, um, sponsored by our Malone Parent Committee, which is also another fan favorite for our students. And it just closes out, um, the week before we head into Thanksgiving break, so.
Michael Kaczynski, the intermediate school and teaching and learning, um, from the intermediate school, just want to congratulate our Drama Rama team who earned a red ribbon, ribbon at their festival earlier this month. Um, their performance was the care and feeding of a dragon. Um, this was again a volunteer coach, Julia Albereto, and our students that participated were Sidney Wimber, Victor Schiller, Lucas Russell, Joseph Swanson, Grace Albereto, Isabel Roberts, Lila Montreal, Stevie Johnson, and Penelope Henninger. So congratulations to those students and thank, uh, Ms. Albereto for, uh, volunteering and putting that on for our students and coaching them. Um, on the teaching and learning yesterday, the state report card for last year's assessment, um, or was released publicly. And though I don't have everything pulled together, I will by December for the board, but I just wanted to share out the good news of the, our district report card, our score. Um, I don't remember last year's score, but we are up from last year based on our demographics and student makeup. We are exceeding the expectations that the state has for a district, um, of our size and demographics. Um, just two areas I wanted to highlight on the little graphs, um, to the right. The top one is the achievement priority area scoring. So overall, an achievement, um, percentile rank of all of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin. You can see that our, we are, um, equal to or higher than eighty-eight point seven percent of all districts. So we're in the top twelve percent of all districts in the state of Wisconsin in overall achievement. And then, one of the things I talk with the board a lot about is achievement's great, but what about growth? And it's not an, it's not a one or the either. It's a, it's an and. And for us, we are in the top nine percent of all districts in the state of Wisconsin in growing our students. So when we talk about closing achievement gaps and, um, the things of the recession or the, the pandemic did for us, you can see that as a. or the, the pandemic did for us, you can see that as a district, um, one, we're closing the gaps and we have the high achievement. So just kudos to all of the staff, students, and families that are all part of the educational experience for our students.
Thanks, Michael.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening, Andrew Caudle, Activities Director. Uh, our four athletic programs are all in full swing. Uh, girls' basketball opened up their season last night. They play again on Friday at New Richmond. Uh, boys' basketball open on November 29th at Durant, Arkansas. Uh, boys' wrestling open December 3rd at Ellsworth at the Invitational, and dance will open December 3rd at the Menominee Invitational. Tomorrow night, we have a choir concert 7:00 PM in the auditorium. I'd like to congratulate three students, uh, Ryan Engeldinger, uh, Mackenzie Haglund, and Elliot Cook, who performed at the Wisconsin State Honors Choir a few weeks ago. Uh, congratulate five of our girls golfers, Gabby Matsick, Maddie Ryder, Jeannie Roll, Reece Stutz, and Ava Stelay for earning Academic All-State. Uh, also congratulate three football students, Kenyon Raden, Toby Ripley, Dryden Sealy for, uh, being named Academic All-State. And finally congratulate Reece Stutz, who signed to play golf at Kutztown University, and Ava Stelay, who signed to play at the University of Wisconsin in golf, uh, both signing to, uh, next year to earn scholarships. So thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Um, three quick things. I just wanted to echo, um, the teaching and learning report with the district report cards. It's very difficult to be in rarefied air, both on attainment and growth. To have high achieving students, but also to make, um, excellent growth is, I think, a testament to our staff, the continuous improvement program. And I had the joy this week of meeting with the middle school team and the intermediate team so far. We do want a continuous improvement, identify the, um, goals for each district in academics with regards to reading and math and culture. Those staff have been, um, extremely passionate about understanding the why behind, uh, these scores, the work that they're doing. And we've been, uh, touching base with them about the impact that collaboration time has and the investment that we have in our professionals. Um, for them to be able to work and collaborate, uh, is very similar to what we're asking our students to do and, and the workforce. And it was, uh, I think it puts, uh, a nice, um, basically it just reignites the energy that, uh, we're committed to as educators. Did want to also, um, thank Penny Peterson for, uh, pulling together, uh, a presentation for later today. But more importantly, because it is a special day, that it's November 16th and somebody's birthday. And so Maria, we have your birthday gift via Penny Peterson. Thank you. And, um, I just also wanted to thank Maria and Andy. What you will notice, um, as we move from the Performing Arts Center. Happy birthday.
That's your birthday gift?
Yeah, I hope it's more than that. You got ripped off. Make it do better. Later this, uh, after this board meeting, you'll be able to see, um, both the screen and also the presenters and the board simultaneously. So, um, Andrew Holland and Maria have been working on this since we, uh, transitioned from the Performing Arts Center back into this room. Um, want to thank the time and the extra effort that looks and, uh, that will be posted by Friday as we have them for our community to be able to access and review the great work of the district. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rick. We're gonna move on to business. Uh, first item is a consent agenda, so I'm just gonna read through this really quick. Uh, the items in consent are the October 19th, 2022 regular board minutes. We got board checks and finance, policy 5330, policy 6146, and 6114, policy 6152. We have non-licensed personnel, personnel retirement, resignation, employment, and change of non-licensed staff, ALIS training and drills, and the early college credit program, and Start College Now approvals for the next term, spring and fall of 2023.
Is there anything that any of the board members would like to have pulled out at this time?
And then he's already smiling at me. So, um, I just can't wrap my head around the early college thing all the time. And there's a, there's a statement in the form that we're potentially out of policy.
Should we pull it out and then just have a quick discussion on it?
Yeah.
Get through the consent then?
I'm sorry.
Yep, that's fine. That's fine.
This is the first time we tried to do it this way.
First time we're ever pulling someone out of consent, thanks to Pat.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. So we'll pull out item number eight. Our Roman numeral eight.
Correct.
Anything else? All right. I will adopt a consent agenda. Are there any objections? No objections. The consent agenda is adopted, so we'll move right into this, um, this item here to talk about the early college credit program. So, uh, Josh, I know you're probably off the cuff here. Is it, do you want, you want him to come up?
Yep, and I have the document that was presented to the board. Um, just point of order, the reason that this can be is it was duly noted, um, on the agenda and posted. Um, so all you're doing is bringing it from a consent into, um, open discussion.
Yep.
So let me post this, uh, Josh, for you.
Thank you.
You want to just describe again what this program is, when it's for, uh, the coming term? And what we're attempting?
Well, it's, it's, it's two. So I apologize for my voice. Apparently I'm losing it. Early College Credit and Start College Now are two programs that Wisconsin has to allow high school, um, students that are above their sophomore year to gain access to either a technical college course, which is Start College Now, or a four-year university course, which is, um, early college credit program. The state subsidizes portions of the early college credit program. So if you look across the top of the table here, you can see that colleges can only charge us a max of a half of the total cost of that credit. And then the state actually reimburses us 25% after the fact of the cost of that credit. Um, the state of Wisconsin also has in statute that a school really can't deny a course that is outside of the normally prescribed or normally, um, provided curriculum or course options that they have at the, the district level, as long as the student meets the stipulations. And as long as it goes up to 18 credits. Anything above 18 credits is up to the discretion of the district and the school board to make a decision. We do have a policy in place with Niola that says that, um, 18 credits is what we provide. But because I do have a student who's, so two things. Number one, two of those students, student two and student six, um, are not seeking this in the spring. They're seeking it for the fall of 2023. So we're just, we're getting a jump on things so that we don't bring this all the time every month. Um, but student number three has, you can see, already taken 10 credits or is in the process of finishing up 10 credits and is seeking another 13 credits. I didn't want to cut out those credits down to eight without bringing it past you because I thought this was a really good litmus test for the board, um, to help me figure out what we want to do from this point forward. So you can see the total expenditures and the cost for our early college credit. And then down below that, there's the Start College Now program. Start College Now, since it's a different program, does not have reimbursement. But the credit cost is less because it's through a, a technical college program. And we have a partnership with CBTC. So you're gonna see that there are quite a few credits there, but for a reduced cost than you normally see for someone taking, um, credits through a technical college program. What are your questions?
Well, the reason, the reason I just thought it would be that we should pull it out is we do have a, we're asking for approval to, to, uh, approve something outside of policy, right?
Yeah.
And so, so I read that, right?
And my question, I guess my question to the board is, in something like this, because I know we've, we started to do this under consent is, are you comfortable with me limiting it to the, in this case, eight? And just saying, you can choose eight credits. We're not going to go for the full 13. Is that the way you'd prefer to proceed in the future?
I thought that we actually, I, I was just looking back at agendas and stuff. I thought there was one other time that we came across this, like in the past, like year or two, and we held to the 18.
Yep.
And I can't find the exact agenda, but it's where I'm, I, I feel most comfortable holding to the 18 myself, but.
Yeah, it's, if it's policy, I mean, we should stick with policy. Otherwise, we should review the policy and change it and add a little bit more flexibility. So if it's policy, I agree.
Okay. And the student choice, we're okay with the student choosing the eight?
I do think if this starts to be more common, right, that's probably great that we're having kids have, you know, taking advantage of these things and then that a policy can be changed if we start to see that this is common. But right now, it seems like it's, it's not that common yet.
I think we'll, we'll start to see some, it'll be more common for students to take three or four credits through the program. I think this will be rarefied air to take, to try and take 23 credits.
Yeah.
Through this program.
Well, and I think part of the reason too, you know, 18 credits is somewhat reasonable for the district to help pay for.
Yes.
23, 30, you know, you start getting in those kind of numbers and then we're paying for a whole year of somebody's college too. So maybe we've got to balance our responsibility physically to helping our kids get further along in their education.
Yeah, it, it's, to me, it's a policy thing. So we can, we can revisit the policy if, if we want to make the change. But for now, I think we stick with the eight. And let, let the student choose the eight. Is that all right?
Yeah. No, that's, that's what I needed.
Okay.
It's clarification. Thank you.
We got enough. I mean, can somebody like form a motion here and are, do we just want to change it to right on the agenda, right on the document to be eight or can't we? We can't.
Okay. Like a trial motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I approve.
Oh, boy.
I approve authorization of ECCP Start College Now credits as presented today with the exception of allowing Josh Figgy to, um, restrict, uh, overall credits to 18 paid for by the district. That was rough.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pat carries. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item B, consider retirement, resignation, and new hires of licensed staff. It looks like.
There are none.
There are none. All right. So we can move on. Nothing to motion there. Uh, item C, we're on, elect a WASB delegate for the convention on January 18th to the 20th. Did we have a strong?
Who's outgoing?
I, I'm going. I usually, I usually do go to this, uh, WASB, this delegate meetings, the assembly. So I can, I can do it unless there's a, a strong opinion that somebody else wants to do it. I'm, I'm only there half the time, so. Okay.
I do not want to do it.
I actually enjoy it, so I'm kind of a nerd. But I, I can, I can, I can volunteer.
Well, um, I'll move to elect, uh, Mike Matsick as WASB delegate. And Tanya Hollob, alternate delegate for the 2023 WASB convention. Second place, January 18th through 20th, 2023 in Milwaukee.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Point of order, because I'll forget. Maria, we do have to submit these names to WASB. Thank you.
Item D is the proposal for the academic terms at PHS to move from three terms of five periods to three terms of six periods.
So this was on information and discussion previously, and Josh is going to come back up. And, uh, you had challenged, or asked us to follow up and gather some additional information. He has that for you tonight.
Excellent. Actually, can I have you just go to slide number two right away? Um, so this is just a reminder of our proposal, um, a schedule adjustment from our current three trimesters with five periods to, uh, uh, schedule with three trimesters with six periods. And looking to hit some big goals, our two biggest goals were, um, continuity of learning. So having some of our foundational core courses be able to extend over time, have more minutes and more meetings. And the second one was trying to either hold serve or expand the ability for students to take additional elective courses. Dr. Spukuz, can I, can I have you go to slide number three? So this is kind of our update on where we're at. Um, in the October board meeting, um, one of the things I told you is I would create some feedback loops for stakeholder groups. Um, you had a couple of questions. They, they kind of had some common themes with the feedback I got from two of our stakeholder groups, which were parents and students. Um, so I sent out kind of an FAQ, a video, and then an ability to submit questions or other comments from, for parents. Um, I also pinged our parent committee, uh, at our October meeting and updated them and then asked for feedback. Um, and then one of the benefits of subbing a lot for students is I get a chance to talk to a lot of kids. And so, um, I was able to kind of do samples of our freshmen, uh, sophomores, and juniors, far less scientific than I probably would have liked, but it did allow me to just kind of sit down and have some casual conversations. And, and two themes kind of emerged that were very similar to some of the things that we talked about at the board level um, in October. The first one is just choice and flexibility in scheduling, wanting to make sure that we were able to maintain um, or increase some of the flexibility for students to take courses and not inadvertently take away the ability for students to engage in, um, specific programming, music, CTE, et cetera. Um, the second thing was, and I just termed it as cardinal time needs. One of the things we talked about was we were going to steer away from cardinal time. Pat, I think you asked a really good question about this is, this is a need. What do kids do if they need to get some work done during the day? Are study halls on the table? Is there other, are there other interventions, um, that we could look at? Um, I think those are still on the table, but kind of an overwhelming, um, piece of feedback that I got from students and parents was they really like the cardinal time model. Um, they liked that that's available during the day and it's embedded in every student's schedule. In addition to that, I met kind of back with some of our strategic PLCs. One of them is, is music. Um, music is a little bit different than other electives in that when you take a music class, and Ryan knows this, it's, it's something that you want to take because it's foundational for three tries for the entire year. And so it's a lot more difficult to schedule, especially if you're starting to restrict the schedule, which we're not trying to do. Um, but having a cardinal time has allowed us a safety net for those kids in the past couple of years. And so both parents, students, and, um, our music PLC really heavily advocated to maintain cardinal time. Um, so I think in my work with, uh, Mr. Kosmalski, with our departments, with Mr. Montreal, we didn't want to sell you guys kind of some fake magic beans. We did a time study that we presented last, um, board meeting. I think we have the ability to keep a cardinal time and still expand time and touch points for foundational courses that are out there by being creative. So, um, what we would advocate for is moving towards that three by six. Um, we would look to keep that cardinal time in place. At the same, same time, our period lengths would be, depending on how our schedule works out, 60 to 64 minutes. We would still dramatically increase our instructional minutes for those really core foundational courses that we discussed in October.
Tanya, do you have any questions here?
Um, I'm looking at your time comparison that you sent us, which is a different slide, I think. And I guess I can't remember back to the other cardinal time, but is that just something that it's kind of like five minutes less on every class period or something like that to give us the cardinal time basically? Okay.
Yeah, so, and, and Mr. Kosmalski and I did. The, the difficulty is I talked to, uh, Michael and Rick is our feedback started to really ramp up in the last 48 hours, which was really great to get more feedback. Um, I wish the proximity of the board meeting was not quite as tight. But I don't think it changes our, our direction of what we want to go other than cardinal time. So Michael and I were able to do kind of a revised time study today if we keep cardinal time. For example, our English courses, over the course of somebody's high school career for English, they would go from a current 32,500 minutes to almost 38,500 minutes. So we'd add about 6,000 minutes into English. In fact, in every core area, we would add in about 3,500 minutes, um, over the course. The only courses, and this was true in October, the only courses that will lose out are those courses that will not expand the amount of trimesters that they're meeting. And so they will lose out on, um, do you remember what it is? Do you have it up? 500 minutes over the course of their trimester or two trimesters.
For, for the electives?
Any, any core class or elective that only, that hasn't expanded their time, that's only a single trimester. That's what they lose out on. But that's metered out over 58 days.
Uh, my feedback from anybody I talked to in the community and high school kids was similar. Cardinal time was kind of the only worry that I really heard from people other than just like the logistics and the change. It was, cardinal time was really that one.
Before we move off on cardinal time, how, what is it? How much cardinal, like what's the amount of time they get for cardinal time right now?
40 minutes.
They get 40 minutes. Okay. Is that, I'm gonna try to figure out. They get forty minutes. Okay. Is that, we're going to try to figure out a happy medium in there to maybe not forty minutes, but?
Yeah, it would have to be less than forty minutes. It'd be somewhere between twenty-five and thirty. To make the times work, to balance out the need for having that time. One of the, one of the struggles.
Four minutes in an hour, right? I mean, you can't, you can't add time, so.
Unless you guys want to expand the school day.
No.
I mean, but the purpose of cardinal time that, I mean, there's lots of purposes, but one of those purposes is to make sure interventions can run, different kinds. I mean, so that thirty minutes, twenty-five minutes is time for that and, and touch points when kids need those. So that's great.
Correct.
I had a question with policy was just, we're going to have to adjust some policy when it comes to graduation credits and stuff like that. And so that stuff I think will probably start seeing on agendas once this gets approved.
And I think that's slated for December if I'm correct.
Okay.
Dr. Spicuzza.
Depending if this is approved.
And then just the feedback, I really, really appreciate having this as part of our discussion last month. You taking feedback, hearing feedback, talking to stakeholders and just really being willing to adjust based on what you're hearing from your stakeholders. I think so many times leaders have kind of, you've obviously been working on this for a long time. And then you get feedback and sometimes it's hard to pivot. And I just really think it speaks volumes to your ability to listen and revamp. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Pat?
No, thank you. I, I looked back at my notes. I think everything was answered. I think the cardinal time is, is a great, because you guys had reasons why you didn't love cardinal time. So great compromise. I, I got no questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Steve?
No questions.
Ricky?
No questions, just agree with Pat and Tanya. The cardinal time was an issue I was hearing too, so.
Ryan, did you have any, any questions on this one?
I wasn't here last time, so I do have one question.
You're going nuts.
When you say extend the, or extend the time of the core classes, you mean make all of them a full year, correct? Or like?
Not all of them, but those, those core foundational classes, think algebra one, geometry, algebra two. So instead of, right now, most of them meet two trimesters, so about a hundred and sixteen touch points they made for the full one hundred and seventy-two, one hundred and seventy-three, whatever our calendar allows. So yes.
Yeah, Josh, thanks for, thanks for following up and putting this together. I know a lot of time has been spent on this and you guys are pretty passionate about, about this. So thank you for doing this. I think we can entertain a motion if the board is ready.
I'll move to approve proposal for academic terms at PHS to move from three terms with five periods to three terms to six periods.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Thank you. All right, our favorite topic, item B, first reading of updated board policies. Rick, do you want to just take these all together and just kind of give a quick synopsis of each one of them and then?
Sure, and I'm going to have Jessica Studi, who's our registered nurse and oversees our programming. If she could just come to the podium in case she had any specific questions. She could also could just clarify some of the high thirty thousand foot touch points. We are putting forward five health policies forward. The overall theme is that we want to continue to maintain and keep students on site as often as we can. So rather than being exclusionary, trying to make sure that we have them on site. So a couple of things that you'll see is we're going to start overall with it covers communicable diseases. It does cover lice. It does cover students with accidents, illness and concussions. In addition, there are two policies that are specific to our staff, and that's physical examinations and that we provide a drug-free workplace. I want to just compliment Jessica. She has come in, worked with our staff. She's attended our administrative meetings. I think the one that I would like you to just touch on is the eighty-four fifty-one about lice.
I figured that was going to be the one.
Because people may ask about that and I'll put it up on the board for you. We're asking for a very minor change. We did give you the feedback from CDC and the National Association of School Nursing. We are being a little bit more conservative on it, but we are also changing that it is not exclusionary. So you want to just explain the rationale?
Yeah, so with lice is, I don't know, is it working? Okay, with lice, we actually are seeing a rise in some of our classes right now. And so the CDC and the National Association of Nursing has put forth articles that there is nothing that would change by sending a child home and excluding them from school versus keeping them here to learn. You're not going to do anything different. You're going to, yes, treat your child. That's a no-brainer. But we don't want to exclude children because this can be a process that can lead to weeks, even a month. We've had families that were excluded for up to twenty, twenty to thirty days last year. And it was because they were being sent home every single time they had lice. That is twenty to thirty days of their school time that was cut. Is lice something that's disgusting? Yes, absolutely. Like, we all sit there and itch our heads. However, the children that have it, they first off are still able to learn. They are not sharing brushes. They're not sharing things in the classroom that would give them cause to be transferring it. Our teachers have been amazing in the classrooms that do have lice to like let us know so we can actually do lice checks. So we've been trying to be proactive. I know St. Joe's had quite a few cases and that's kind of where we're seeing a transfer. But we want to put in live adult bugs. If we see them at this point, that then means that they can be transferred. If it is adolescent or an egg, it cannot be transferred to another person's head at that time. So that's why we want this change. We're not going to say that we're not going to send students home if the parents choose to. That is always up to them to make that decision. But we would like to say that we're not going to be sending kids home unless we see live adult lice. Because if they've been treated already, they may still have eggs and they may still have the adolescents. And that's not something that can be prevented at that point. They're still in the death phase. So, or the dying phase, I should say. So that's why this one is a big deal to get that changed.
I just have a general question on lice. These policies typically will have some reference to Neola making annual adjustments or whatever. Is any of this driven by Neola or is this all district?
This more is CDC and, and nursing.
CDC, okay, thank you.
I attended a conference and according to DPI, they are in full support. So that's the Department of Public Instruction. They are in full support of not sending kids home for any lice. Live, dead, doesn't matter. They think that it's absolutely, they support the CDC and they support NASA and saying, nope, don't ever send a kid home. So we're trying to adjust and kind of meet in the middle of that. Because I, I just feel that we would have an uprising in parents if it truly was, you're not sending anyone home, even with like bugs, like what? So we didn't want to adjust it to that point as of yet. We understand the guidelines, but we want to also be respectful.
And you may do this already, but is there education material for parents to explain it?
We do have it. Whether or not they read it, that's a whole different.
But, but Steve's question, can you at least share where it's on the website? But also you do create a newsletter?
Yes, every month.
And you decided to pick a specific date?
Yeah, on the Fridays, I'm attempting, obviously it was thrown off with COVID, but I'm attempting to do it the first Friday of every month. Where I do a nursing update. So I send it to all parents of the district every Friday. That's the first of the Fridays of the month. And the reason I want that to be a thing is I feel like there's lots of questions that get asked from parents, from staff that can be easily answered. And that's a great way. Plus, it's a reference point. And by doing so, we've actually heard some of the phone calls. So that's why we do that. And I can easily put more information in that.
The other, unless you have questions on lice, I've wanted to.
I had one more question on lice. I know kind of some of the statistics behind our students that have lice and repetitively get lice and stuff like that. And I was just wondering, do we offer any assistance for families if they need it to, because it's not.
Right. So we've talked about that and I'm in a full support of supplying. It's come down to, we try to do the families that do not have access. And we've kind of gotten case by case basis. The other thing to note is that doctors actually can write a prescription for it. And every family that we have confirmed cases of lice, that is education that we provided to them. Especially for families. If one person has it, that can become an expensive treatment for every person in that family. Plus the laundry costs, you know, all the cleaning. I mean, it's, it's a big cost and a lot of our families in our district do not have that. So financially, if they have fat or care, they can qualify and it will be paid for by the state. But if it is something, last year when I started, we ended up giving some to a few families. Yes, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on this one?
The other one I wanted Jessica just to speak to is because she and Andrew Cordill have been working in tandem on this. As you know, we have AED units that are in the district. If you could just speak to how we've expanded that and also we're adding cardiac arrest and, but the other piece that was added was about concussions. If you follow through the policy, just to kind of remind the board is that if it's in green, it's new. And so this is the information. We did have our physician that oversees our districts and the athletics. And Jessica, participate and you want to just give us a quick update on that?
Yep. So activities notified me about Dr. Lichness not wanting to assist the district unless we had more AEDs. So one of the things, cardiac arrest is definitely on the rise and we need to be supportive of our athletics department. So what we did is we ended up purchasing five more AEDs for the district. Four of those have specifically gone to the athletics department and they will be taken with them to every practice, every game that they are not here at our building. The other thing that we're trying to kind of move to is having a one to three minute timeframe from the time that that, you're called, or somebody's notified of grabbing an AED. From the time that they're notified to the time they get there and get back needs to be under three minutes. So we are trying to move towards that. We're trying to find funding for that. But in regarding this, with the cardiac arrest, we did add that and we want that added to the policies as well as concussions. That's another thing that I undertook as well as to how we are actually assessing our students. Any student that hits their head to a force where there was witnessed of bouncing of their head or it hit cement. Mel Charette and myself, she's the LPN of the district, we have been doing full-on head assessments and neural assessments as well and then referring. And so far, we've had four concussions confirmed since starting that. These would be students that would have normally come in and gotten an ice pack and went back to class. So this is something we have seen. Is it tedious? Yes. But it also prevents a student from having a concussion and being at school not capable of learning. So concussion, cardiac arrest, those have been some big ideas that we've been tackling at this time.
I'm going to open it up. Anybody else? Anybody have any questions on this one? No?
Anything else? Just the last one is just a quick one on criminal background history. As you know, that we do screen all applicants with background checks. What Neola has recommended is that part of the state relicenture and things like that, there are periodic checks, but we do want to point out that we are asking to follow the Neola request that if an individual does have a violation, that there would be required to inform HR or the district administrator no more than three calendar days after an arrest. This is a further iteration. It does not include driving violations. And so that has been added to kind of clarify what the intent of this was. It was more about criminal background that would have occurred in between scans behavior.
And opening up, anybody questions, Pat?
Yeah, so Steve, you actually asked us before, and I think so on, on the lice policy, this came up because of CDC and ASN and then our own guidance. I think like the physical examination though, and the communicable diseases, are these coming up because of Neola suggestions? Or are these just driven?
Good, yeah. The tuberculosis, basically it is a state law and this is just making sure that our policy is updated and compliance with that. So anybody that works in food service or directly with students has to be screened for TV. And so that's been updated and has been our practice as of fall and moving forward. And then this criminal background.
And on that one, some of the green text is, it's, is that, has that been recommended by Neola? Or is that just, okay, all right, because it's, it gets out there a little bit. So, thank you. I'm good, Mike.
Okay. Anybody else? Ryan, you want to talk policies? Anything else on policies?
I don't know.
That's a good answer. All right. So we're just going to take all these together unless you guys want to split them up, but the motion can be for all of them.
I move to approve first reading of updated board policies.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
And just to qualify if I can, this is a first reading, so.
First reading.
This is not, these are not finally approved and if people do have comment or questions.
Yeah, and it'll come back next month as a second reading and that's when they get finalized. So, all right, item F, we're moving on to consider clarification of team versus individual coach stipends for extended seasons.
Andrew Cordell, Activities Director, going to have four items for you tonight. This is the first one. This is something I've talked with Dr. Spicuzza about last year, so I'm happy that we're talking about it tonight. So in our current structure and our handbook, our handbook actually separates our athletic programs into team sports and individual sports. So currently, our head coaches in boys cross country, girls cross country, girls track, boys track, girls golf and boys golf are not afforded the same postseason bonus structure for team championships like our other sports. And a couple of examples of that, if a head coach go, is a, of a team that goes to state in a team sport, they get a four hundred dollar stipend. For individual sport as a finer handbook, their stipend is two hundred. Another example is in our last two athletic seasons, we had four teams win a regional championship. And of those four teams, our handbook awarded one coach a stipend. The other three did not get one based on our current, our current language. So what we're, what I'm proposing tonight is really just to create an equitable structure. So my proposal aligns with all athletic programs under one structure that affords all head coaches of our athletic programs the same opportunity to earn earn an additional stipend for extended season. So I'll have three charts for you in the next slide. I'll have two side by side to kind of compare our team sports and versus any, any individual qualifier. So for all of our teams except football, this is a proposal. Three hundred dollars for a conference championship, which is no change. A regional championship, which is two hundred, which is aligning all teams together, sectionals three hundred. And new, if they win a state championship, five hundred. If a coach has an individual that qualifies that is not a part of a team championship, so they can't do both. So if we have a golfer individually, a cross-country runner individually, then coaches can earn an additional stipend. So conference championship, sectional qualifier, state qualifier, state champion. And you'll see all it is, is half. It's just half of the, of the chart above. Now, on the next slide, football is separate. The reason football is separate because unlike every other sport, football is the only sport where you have to earn a playoff spot. And every other sport, you could have the worst team in the state and you are still put in the bracket for a chance to at least compete for a state championship. The dollar amounts are the exact same. It's just a little bit different. So instead of a regional championship, which does not exist in football, it would be for a playoff berth. And then conference championship, sectional championship and state championship are the exact same as every other team sport. So all the proposal is tonight is to align our programs to be the same so that all of our head coaches have the same opportunity. Because ultimately all of our teams are team sports first. So I'll be happy to take any questions.
Steve, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious, where does the money come from? How is it budgeted?
So this is coming out of Fund 10. And so what we do is there's a little bit budgeted for it. And if it's something that we have to fundraise for, we, we will. Ultimately, we've been able to cover this no problem. If we have a lot of teams that are going deep in the playoffs, I think it's a, it's a good problem to have, but it is something that, that we do budget for. And we, it's something that we do plan for because ultimately in athletics, if you are, are advancing, your season just keeps getting longer. Versus if you are a team that does not advance very far, your season then comes to a complete stop.
So looking at football, to win a state championship is a cumulative, so it'd be $1,300?
Correct. Yep. It would be, it would definitely be cumulative.
Assuming you win conference, right?
Yeah. You have, you'd have to win all of them. Yeah.
And the, and I think the purpose of this obviously is to recognize, you know, kind of success. But also realize that it, it extends the time that a coach and their staff are working with the team and the logistics. So, you know, a season lasts eight weeks and then they go on a nice run into the state. There's a lot of additional logistics planning and it's to help compensate for those hours that our coaches are putting in.
Sure. And it's, it's head coach only.
Correct.
So they do what they want to with it after they go to the pocket. Okay. Thank you.
Vicky, any questions or comments?
No, that, that was going to be my question.
Ryan, any questions on this?
Um, no, I was aware of this issue in the past, but I do run track, so I think it's important.
Todd. Uh, can I, can you just clarify a little bit more the head coach versus the assistant coach stuff? Um, because this would go to the head coach.
Yep.
But not anything for the assistants?
No, not, not, I'm not proposing that change for, for the handbook. Now, we do, we have had head coaches in the past who upon their direction have asked to spread it out amongst their assistants. They just can't go over the prescribed amount out of the handbook. And so we have done that in the past. It's really up, up to them.
And I know that it's, you know, finances is part of it, but why not assistant coaches? Because they're also putting in the time and time is part of it and.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. That's not how we have it currently. I know that Dr. Spicuzzza has asked me to think about a, a longer discussion around our, our stipends for later in the year. I think that's something we can, we can definitely add. My, my intent tonight is to create an equitable structure for our head coaches. Since our current structure doesn't have equity amongst our, our head coaches.
And just some background, you know, we've talked about there's a season for everything. The budget's been kind of finalized. Andrew has been working on a complete overhaul of the extracurricular stipends. Given that we already have the budget fixed, I have asked him to be ready to come back in the spring. He's already presented myself and Sue Gertis, our finance coordinator, to be able to kind of look at those numbers and put it into as we model. Obviously, we have to wait for the new bionium. And so we wanted to make sure that we were at base, make everything equitable. So any transformations, we weren't doing it already from a place where it was inequitable. And so that was one thing we wanted to try to take care of.
Thank you.
Pat?
Andrew, for footballers, because you're on this slide, sectional championship, that would be a level four winner.
Yep, the advancing to the state championship.
So just because do they, does WA call that a sectional championship or they call it level four winner?
Um, that's a good, that's a good question. Yeah.
Questions later down the road.
I do think they used to call it that. I do think they call it a level four, your state qualifier. Because it is the only sport to where you have, state is considered two teams for a championship or other sports. You have maybe a quarter final or semifinal. So.
I don't know that it matters to me.
We can adjust that.
Do to tighten it up.
Yeah.
Can then, can you go back one previous slide? Please, um, the, oh, maybe this was one outside of that. When you were talking about, you know, the team sports, um, I think maybe.
The seconds, yeah.
There you go. So, um, maybe wrestling, because we got some wrestling coaches in the audience is a great, great example, right? So we're saying that your proposal is that if a, if a wrestler would advance to state, the head coach gets, gets a stipend. Just like a basketball coach would. And in his support of that, what if, what if two wrestlers go though? Is it double the stipend?
No, the proposal is first, did your team advance? No. Then you go with the second chart. So let's use fall for example. Girls golf advances a team. Tyler Lauks advances an individual in cross country. And so it would be, and we can clarify that too, that it's, you don't get to multiply it by individuals as were you a team or were you an individual?
And I would just make sure to just tighten that up. Thanks. Yeah. And Rick, you answered my questions about kind of just doing a whole overview of stipends across all the extracurricular programs. So.
Looks good.
For us, or for me, Andrew. So if you guys are ready for a motion, we can take one.
I moved, I moved to approve clarification of team versus individual coach stipends for extended season due to state runs. Structure proposal for athletics and making effective for 2022, 2023 school beyond.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We're on item G, consider aligning middle school athletics stipend to be in line with other sports.
Yep. So this is kind of the same, same tone, just create a little bit more equitable process that will help us in our future discussions. So this is around middle school basketball, both boys and girls. So in our current structure, we have, our athletics programs are broken into two groups. Group one is going to be football, girls volleyball, boys basketball, girls basketball, boys and boys wrestling. And group two is going to be all the other sports. As it stands right now, in group one, all head coaches are 5100 for 1.0 FTE. High school assistants are 3150 F, 1.0 FTE. And middle school assistants are 2035 1.0 FTE, except basketball. Basketball is act, for middle school is actually 1865 for 1.0 FTE. Everything in bucket two is then the same. And I know there may be a question about why is bucket one that and why is bucket two lower? I can't answer that. That's just the way the handbook is written. So what my proposal is, is to create alignment in bucket one. And raise the middle school boys and girls basketball stipends to 2035. To be aligned with girls volleyball, football and boys wrestling. Their seasons are about the same length. Their student to coach ratio is actually probably a little more since we only award two FTEs for both boys and girls basketball separate. Whereas, you know, football and girls volleyball will get four 1.0 FTEs. So again, just creating better alignment that will help our future conversation. So I'd be happy to take any questions on this.
Anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah. Um, I'm confused. So we're, we're talking.
I may have gone through that really fast.
No, but just the, the graphics talks about high school and then is bucket two middle schools?
No, bucket two are those sports. So the head coach for girls golf and boys golf is, is 4,000. Because bucket two, all the head coaches get 4,000. The high school assistants for a 1.0 FT is 2285.
Well, but here's what's confusing. We're talking middle school, but you talk high school assistants. So.
Yep. So that's because in bucket one, the head coaches, assistant high school coaches and middle school coaches are all the same, except for basketball. In bucket two, they're all the same. So what I'm proposing is that middle school boys and girls basketball be raised from 1865 to 2035. To align with all of the other coaches in bucket one for middle school.
And then, so we've got some discrepancies as far as, you know, basketball making a different amount than cross country, for example.
Correct. Yeah.
So the handbook you said?
Yep. And so those are the different buckets. I think that's part of the longer conversation on, so why is football and baseball different? I don't really know why the buckets are different and why sports in bucket one were put there versus sports in bucket two. What I just, what I am proposing is that within each bucket, it's equitable between the sports.
Well, I mean, okay, I'm with you there. I, as long as we've got an opportunity to have some more conversation. Because if we're going to have different, you know, pay rates for different sports, I'd like to know why.
Yeah.
And we've had these conversations before. We used to do annual review of coaching salaries. You know, with some of these discussions. So this, this probably just needs to be.
Yeah.
Handle.
Tries the season. Yep.
Vicky?
Yeah, I, I think we need to address all the sports, not just, yeah. A portion of them, that we need to come back to all of them, for sure.
So my, just to piggyback, is, am I understanding correctly that right now you're addressing significant equity that you see just already there? Inequity, I should say, similar to the last one that we approved. And our plan is for you to do a deeper study and next year, when we are looking at budgets and stuff, coming back with a different proposal. Okay. Because I, I had the same question. I know like cross country, you know, like I, I get there might be like a time study and stuff like that. But it's good to touch base back with that. So.
Yeah. So that's, that's the hope is that assuming this is approved, then all the positions in bucket one are the same. All the positions of bucket two are the same. Then the next conversation is why is there a difference between bucket one and bucket two?
Got you. Okay. Yeah, Andrew, and maybe I'm just ignorant here a little bit. Up there you have a middle school assistant at 2035. And you've got it listed for boys basketball and girls basketball up there though. If we're going to, if your proposal is to raise the middle school head coach to 2035. The middle school assistant basketball isn't making 20, yeah, is that middle school head?
So there, so the way we have it set up is that there's one head coach for every sport. And then we have high school assistants and middle school assistants that are under the same umbrella. And so currently as it stands today, our middle school boys basketball coaches and girls basketball coaches are making 1865, whereas.
I understand that.
Yep.
What are the middle school assistant coaches making in basketball?
So there's only two coaches per, um, per team. And they're both classified as assistants under the head varsity coach. They're assistants for middle school.
That's the shift, right? So like my daughter's going to do basketball eighth grade. The basketball coach, who I think of as a head coach, is really considered a middle school assistant coach rather than a head coach.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's where the 2035 comes from. It's just aligning it with wrestling, volleyball and football because they are a bucket one sport.
I just think HR and payroll is trying to figure all this out.
So there's, there's a seventh grade head coach.
Which we found assistant to do this.
Hmm. Well, there's a seventh grade, there's a seventh grade head coach, I'm back to basketball. And there's an eighth grade head coach. We're, we're labeling, labeling them as assistants and there's two, there's not anything else. Okay.
Yep. And currently they get 1865 per our handbook.
Is that assistant language what's currently in our handbook?
In our handbook, it just says coach.
Okay.
And so, um, the way, so when I got here last year, we created that alignment for our programs. So that our middle school programs were in alignment with our high school programs. And it's, it's created, uh, it's created cohesion in our, in our athletics programs.
Anybody else have any questions?
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Uh, let's make a motion here. We're good. I'll move to approve aligning middle school athletics stipend to be in line with other sports for the 2022 to 23 academic year.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And item H is dance team overnight trip.
Okay, have your on the table. Let's go.
Yep. So I have, um, this is one PowerPoint. I've got both overnight trips in here. So dance will be first. So they would like to go an overnight trip to the competition hosted by Little Shoot, which is near the Wausau area, I believe. So they're going to travel on December 9, compete on December 10. And talking with their coach, this creates more opportunities to compete with teams other side of the state. And the other side of the state actually has more competition opportunities. And it'll help them get a, get a good look on the competition that will, they will face at state. So even in dance, you want to get a good look on who you will compete against for, for the big prize. And so they would like to take a trip for that. Um, for, for budgeting purposes, I will cover the bus. And then the dance program will have the fundraising to pay for their lodging and their meals for the trip. So they'll leave the ninth, stay the night, compete the 10th and then travel back on the 10th.
And that this year?
Yep, this year.
Pat, any questions?
No, it shows how things are financed. I'm good. Thanks.
We, yeah, no, no question. That is something that we do often. So, yep.
Let's see.
All right. Ask my question. Vicky?
No question.
Ryan?
No.
No.
All right. We'll take this one.
I'll move to approve dance team overnight trip to Wausau area for December 9th and 10th, 2022.
I'll second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries on the wrestling overnight trip.
Yeah. So I'll have a, I'll have a partner in this one. I'll just go through the, the trip real quick. And Coach Morgula is actually here as well. He wanted to say a few words about what this trip will mean for the program. And so he wants to take the, take the guys over, over to Maple River. They have a tournament on February 4th. And so they will travel on the 3rd of February, stay the night the 3rd and compete on the 4th. A great team bonding opportunity towards the end of the year. Great competition over there as they prepare for their postseason and their opponents will have no impact in the postseason. And if you're familiar with wrestling, when you get towards the end, sometimes you keep wrestling the same opponent over and over again. So that will put a break into that on their schedule. And for finances, kind of the same thing, you know, I'll, I'll pay for the bus. And then the program has the fundraising to pay for lodging and meals. And I did make a note that Coach has done a really good job fundraising. When he arrived, the, the account had about $13 in it. And so far since he's been here, they've raised over two grand. I know he's continuing to fundraise. So I'll turn over to him to say a few things about the trip.
Andrew, just to clarify, who's paying for the bus? You or the athletic?
Athletics. Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yes. I am not personally funding the bus. The athletics district account will be funding that. I appreciate, I should probably, I will also say that in dance, I will not be personally funding the bus. It'll be, be the same. So.
It's too late. We already motioned. Yeah.
So Ross is also a new teacher with the Prescott Public Schools and also serving as our head coach.
Yeah. It's been good to be here. Um, over, over in the middle school, eighth grade sped, so that's good. For our wrestling trip, um, down to Maple River, they just built a Brano School there. Um, there's probably 12, 14 teams in the tournament. Um, good teams, but not teams that are going to obliterate us. Um, so it'll be good competition. Um, plan is to practice that morning of the 3rd and then travel after school. And then there's a hotel in Mankato working on getting a quote for. It's right across from like an arcade and some fun stuff they can do on the trip. Um, just because it's the weekend right before our super regional, you know, no bearing on our regional seedings or anything like that. And guys can be loose. They can have some fun a little bit with it too, and also get some good competition for the season. So, yeah. Any other questions on that?
Vicky, any questions?
Uh, nope.
Steve?
I don't know who's paying for the bus. I'm good.
It's Tanya.
No questions.
No, sounds like a good opportunity.
Ryan?
No questions.
I don't have any questions here. Thanks. Thanks.
I'll move to approve boys wrestling overnight trip to Maple River area, February 3rd and 4th, 2023.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Well done. We're on item J. Consider new date for the January board meeting.
Yes, um, we have, I believe, three of our board members, which would leave us without a quorum. Who are attending the WASB, WSD joint convention in Milwaukee. Um, so the proposal is to find another Wednesday night. Based on the kind of workflow and the way the holidays are falling, it's being recommended that January 25th would be um, the more ideal date for the reschedule.
Anybody got any issues with the 25th?
I'm gonna look.
I do not.
I want to have an issue, but I want to be here.
Well, we have a quorum. Let's roll the 25th.
Can we get a quorum for the twenty-fifth? How about that?
Yes.
Sounds like yes. So.
I'm good with it too. If anybody wants to make the motion here.
I gotta get back to it. I'm in my calendar.
Uh, I move to approve new date for January twenty-three, um, board meeting to January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six P M.
I'll second.
We have a motion a second. I'm in favor. I, I oppose that carries. Off of business and on to information and discussion. Where first up is, uh, state, update on the state of the state of the gathering place?
Yeah. So Janet Cleary and Penny, state of the state.
That's, that's Kyle's wording. Or somebody's on.
So Mr. Igo, uh, the reason is, uh, now, um, the supervisor, uh, working with Penny. And we wanted to give an update on some of the great things that are going on. So Penny and Janet, take it away.
Penny Peterson, community ed director for the district, um, and also the school liaison for the gathering place, which is, um, entering its fifth year. And is located at the intermediate school, as you know. Um, the gathering place is a walk-in center for those, um, age fifty-five plus in our community. And, um, I'm just kinda the overview here. She'll talk more about the specifics, but, um, the mission is the community seniors coming together to create a space for joint learning, fun, fellowship, support and service. Which when you hear from Janet, you'll see that they're touching upon all those things in their mission statement. Um, they've got standing committees, which is their advisory committee, which meets quarterly. Their programming and publicity committees, which meet monthly. Their memory cafe committee, which meets quarterly and the memory cafe meets, um, bi-monthly. And finance, which meets quarterly and as needed. Kind of my role with, uh, I help communicate out to the seniors in town, everything that's going on at the gathering place. Um, so right now I send out emails to a hundred and sixty-eight seniors in our district. Um, and then there are some that don't have email. And then Janet on the publicity committee, her and Arlene take care of mailing out, um, and the postal mail, um, calendars to those that do not have email. Um, the publicity committee also hangs out the monthly counters around town on bulletin boards. And, um, emails them to churches and different places around town. So Janet Cleary.
Hi, I'm Janet Cleary. I am a, a member and I'm on the advisory committee as well as publicity. Um, we are open Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays from twelve-thirty to three-thirty. And outside of that, for additional programming such as pickleball, which has been outside and now has moved into the gym. And we've been very fortunate to get a, um, I'm thinking this coming Wednesday, we'd be the last one. Uh, representative from the YMCA has come and done, um, chair yoga and, um, cardio on Wednesday mornings with us. The number of people visiting in twenty twenty-one was only six hundred and fifty-two. However, that was limited a lot by COVID. We had several meetings at Freedom Park, like in May and on in twenty twenty-one. And by October of twenty-one, we had, um, started back. We used to do potlucks. We started with, uh, like a soup and bread, diff- two different gathering place people. Brought in the food and everybody ate for free. By August, I know we did a couple of things like book club at Freedom Park outside, just trying to protect that we had mask policies. So people wore masks and we've always had lanyards to wear in there. So that we're in the school, using restrooms or anything else. They know where we belong. Second week of June this year, we resumed, um, our book club and cards regularly. And, uh, today we had a good record number there on a Wednesday. We had eight people playing Uker and four playing bridge and way too many treats. We have monthly lunches and in December will be our first potluck. We did, we did the two or three people supplying food for the rest of, and it has worked out really well. We've got some really good cooks. Uh, we've had speakers again, um, board games, cards, um, several members. We have resurrected, we all have played canasta a million years ago. And we're learn, learning to play that again with a lot of table talk. There's a walking group that was outside and now we come up to the high school from three-thirty to five, wearing lanyards to walk in their area. Uh, we had the Halloween walk by with my, the middle school or the Malone Intermediate School kids. And we've continued with speakers and we're gonna have some musical entertainment for December too. So. As of November, just November, just this afternoon, I told Penny, we have five new members. So that was one of the reasons we had more people playing cards. So there's good interest around. We've had a kind of revised how we publicize. That's a copy of our, uh, November schedule. And we go according to school when we're open and closed. And we had, um, since Wednesday, the twenty-third is the last day for the live person. She'll be there in the morning, but nobody else the rest of the day. Yeah. And we, and we follow schools. If there's no school, there's no, we're not open. It follows the same weather related things. So we're hoping to continue. Um, we're very grateful to have the space. We do. We managed to, uh, make do without water in there because we've got big gallon jugs we fill. And, uh, yeah, we've managed. Any questions?
Or?
No questions.
If you need a sub for Uker, just give me a call. If you need a sub, if you need an alternate Uker player.
I've heard.
Oh, you wanna be a sub?
Yeah.
Cheater.
Yes.
We can have you stand outside the door and wait and see if we got enough. Starting at a table. I don't know.
I did clearance from all the other players.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that would be a necessity.
Thank you.
All right, we can move on to the online charter, virtual charter school proposal.
And, um, this is here more as, uh, seeking kind of direction from the board. It is a difficult, uh, process and there are two touch points. When a district can create, uh, online charter and there, uh, Saint Christ Central is one that's a neighboring district within the middle border that has such, uh, program and has increased its enrollment by four hundred and fifteen students. Michael Kozmowski is teaching and learning and Josh have, um, been looking at this off and on for the last three years. And we are unable to submit an application for this January. But if we're gonna undergo additional work, we wanted to have the two of them explain what it would include, what are some of the logistics? And whether or not you would like administration to at least continue to pursue it. Or, um, we would be having to come back in December, November, December of twenty twenty-three. So before we go down this road, they wanted to kind of outline what this program is about and what the logistics are. How's that wind up and you guys fill in the blanks?
I think there are a lot of blanks. I'm trying to figure out if it's easier to try and start up here or just say, what are your questions as a school? So, yeah, Michael and I, it's probably been more like four years that we've looked at this. Um, if you're unfamiliar with a virtual charter, we, we've, everyone's more familiar now after COVID, uh, with virtual schools than I think that they were beforehand. Um, a virtual charter is not just an online school. We have the ability right now. In fact, we have a number of students who participate in some varying degree with online courses. We have that ability right now. Uh, what a virtual charter allows us to do is take in open enroll students from outside of our district to essentially recruit students virtually to take virtual courses through our district. And you might be wondering, why would we wanna do that? Um, when it all comes down to it, it is a revenue stream. Um, it allows us to provide education virtually to those students, not on site, but in the virtual realm. And get state funding for each of those students as we do it. As we've looked at this, there are a number of things that Michael's gonna lay out that are a part of this. Um, that would require us, if this is something that school board wants us to pursue, um, to consider moving forward. It is a larger process than it appears at face value. So I know we won't be able to touch on everything, but I know you will be able to ask us what you would, um, value the most. But I'll let Michael kind of fill in some of the blanks first.
Yeah. So, so the big key takeaway is that we got, as we looked at more research is that it's really its own school. You have to have a board of directors. You have to have board meetings, um, finance department. There's, um, as we look at the DPI required calendars, it's, it's very much like running a school. You have your third Friday counts, first October counts. Um, we'd have to have it open to special education students. Now we have to have a student service director. We'd have to have special education, um, teachers that are available. Um, we wouldn't just be able to deny those students, um, like some other schools are able to do. Um, so we have to figure out and, and provide all of the, all the things that would, would need to be covered in their I E Ps. Um, on top of that, um, again, there's reporting. We looked at it, the only month that a report or a financial, um, dump is not due is the month of August. Otherwise, every single month, there are things from DPI that need to be done. Um, the model that we kind of looked at was our closest neighbor state, Curry Central. They have just over four hundred students enrolled, which is great, but they also have thirteen staff members for that school. They have their own principal who works as the administrator, who also runs the board. Um, they have, they have a counselor. They have a school psych. They have two, um, special education teachers. Um, so you think about those wraparound services that we'd have to provide through that. Um, not saying that we can't do it. Um, but if you want to get to the side where you're on the positive side financially, you have to have a large number of kids. You have to have really good marketing and recruiting. But then you also have a staff that can staff that. Um, there are some ways around that. You can partner with other programs. Um, like we use Edmentum up at the high school here for some courses. There's an intermediate school kid that's using Edmentum. I know Saint Grace Central uses that as well, but they also have their own teachers. Cause we, as we learned through the pandemic, especially at the elementary level, having a self-paced computer program does not work. You have to have face-to-face time with teachers. So as we look at it, um, there's a lot more to it. There's a lot more that we'd have to consider. And then sort of what's the piece of the pie that Prescott schools could entice? And to me that takes marketing, that's gonna take more communications and things like that. So before we went any further in the process, um, knowing that we can do this with our own internal students, this is really about open enrollment and trying to attract kids to our district. Is this an avenue or path the board wants to put energy towards in the future? Or do we have enough with that you, on your own plates that you say, let's take a knee and let's not pursue this any further?
I can see this one getting off the rails here really quick, but we should have a quick round of questions here just to kind of get some initial thoughts, but let's try to cap it. Um, I, I just seems like a workshop if we're really serious about it. So I, I, I'm just gonna stop talking. Tony, do you wanna just get your initial thoughts here?
Sure. I think I have some experience with these. We just started one this year too. Um, so you, I'm looking, this is a charter. Um, can you open a choice type school? Could it, cause you can still accept open enrollments, right? Like if we set it up as it's like still an entity of our own school, not a charter. Cause we can take open enrollments right now.
We can, but the stipulation that the state of Wisconsin has in statute is if you take an open enrollment, open enrollee right now, they have to be onsite. For, I believe it's all but one period out of the day. And even if they're taking a virtual course, they're supposed to still have strategic check-ins onsite.
So the state hasn't really caught up with some of this new learning model.
The only way that you, you can do it is to open your own virtual charter within your district.
Okay. And ours is not a charter, so we can have s- staff within buildings also support staff. Like our special ed staff kind of float between the two because it's not a separate entity. Yeah. I, my, my questions right away was, um, from a charter perspective, it's a lot of students you're gonna have to have enrolled to sustain those numbers. And, um, just like we talked about, um, back in COVID times, which seems a long time ago, wasn't that long ago, really seems like. Um, but you know, like those are licenses with staff too. So, right? It's not like you can just have, you know, a couple, you know, you've got forty kids enrolled. Why can't we just have two teachers? Well, there's license and all that kind of stuff. And so, um, you really do. I bet four hundred is probably pretty close to breaking even over there. How many, how many do you need?
I think the, the, the difficult thing, or the, maybe not the difficult thing. Um, the infrastructure that we have in place right now for kids who work virtually online, um, is through ad options. And so the, the entire teaching staff that we have virtually is offsite, but they're Wisconsin licensed teachers. So they meet the stipulation. They're actually for all core courses, doing face-to-face work with those students or have the option to do face-to-face work. So that at face value seems really clean. Where it gets more difficult is what Michael laid out. Those, they do not provide special education teachers. They don't provide a counselor. There's no online counseling. So those are the, the types of positions that we would have to look to invest in. Um, in terms of financial reporting, the depth that goes along there would probably have to have somebody that has part of their day dedicated just to online.
Absolutely. Um, and I guess the risk of it, right, of not doing this is this is the direction that many peo- students are looking for nowadays. Um, and so the risk of not doing it is we could lose some potential students to other online programs, like fully chartered online programs, because you don't have to go into it and stuff. And, um, yeah, I don't know if it's worth us looking into or not. To tell you the truth, I would love to hear more from you guys in your direction and I would definitely take that. Advice. There's one year bias, which makes it a competitor right off the bat for, for kids, you know what I mean? And we have, I assume Minnesota border, Wisconsin border, we still have issues with crossing borders and rest of Crossley and, you know, so we have kind of. But yeah, you can take kids from anywhere in the state part, but yeah.
And I was talking to a teaching and learning director, a former teaching and learning director of one, um, not in Saint Grace Central. And they said in their model, their real goal is, is to produce money and their real, where they see where we successful or not this year is if they can, at the end of the year, have twenty percent of the kids that they started with at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
That it's just a constant churn of kids not doing their work, getting into academic probation, dropping them out of the program, finding someone else to take that seat.
Yep.
Um, so it's, I don't know that that's the Prescott model either.
Yeah. I guess from my perspective, I, I'm not overly interested in, I think it's a, I think it takes away from all the other things that we're doing. It's a ton of work. I think we could become better at some of the things that we do and still gather some of that open enrollment and secure our kids. And I know we have programs like Edment, there's a whole bunch, right, that kids can enroll in and it's not perfect, but it's a handful of kids right now. But anyways, that's just me.
Pat? Um, I would agree. I guess off the cuff, it sounds like a potential distraction and, and if Minnesota's doing it or other states are doing it, reasonable to assume Wisconsin might catch up and, and allow open enrollment, even when you're not within district boundary or, or not physical. That's just a guess. I think before, just maybe poo-poo it though. Uh, you two seem to be championing this a little bit.
No, I, I think what you, what we're starting to see from districts around us, districts as small as Elmwood, um, and as large as, you know, Hudson, Grantsburg. More and more districts are, are pursuing this as a revenue stream for the district. So that's where the two of us came in is just trying to, we didn't wanna fall behind as a district. We felt like we needed to do our due diligence. We knew we were losing some students to online schools and it's kind of a constant churn. They leave, some of them come back, some of them bounce to other online schools. So I don't know that either of us are championing this. I think we would both agree that the potential revenue stream that it could create could be prodigious. But at the same time, the work going into it, the distraction could also be prodigious without the right model, the right supports, enough staffing. So.
Well, and I, and I think the reason I asked that maybe champion wasn't the right word, if there was some passion, you know, around looking into this. There's, there's maybe another step or two that could be taken to prove out some potential business goals without saying, no, it's off the board. Let's not do it. Right? But I mean, if there was just desire by you two or someone else to say, hey, let's put together a draft, what, what a business plan might look like. I mean, I would hate to stifle that, uh, at this point. Um, I guess those are my questions right now, my comments.
All right. Steve? Yeah. Just to build on the business plan piece, I mean, really financial, right? What's the cost gonna look like in high level? Not to the penny necessarily, but get some idea of, you know, administrative, is it gonna cost two hundred grand per year to, to manage this program? You know, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know what it is. And then what's, uh, what's the potential revenue stream to offset that? Because, you know, bringing, bringing income in is great, but if you're spending more than you're bringing in.
Right.
We're wasting a lot of time. So ju- just some, some kind of high level.
Sure.
Good. Indication that might look like. Vicki?
Yeah, I guess. My question is, okay, so with some of these smaller districts looking at this as something they might do, do you see this as something that we could offer to their students if their schools are looking at, you know, losing teachers because they're so small? Would that be like, I guess that's where the potential marketing, that sort of stuff comes in. Are some? Are some of those other smaller schools or other places where they're looking at consolidating districts or something, is this something that would be appealing to those places to do versus us since we have?
I think the thing is, is it's a little bit of a competition with F T, with kids. Because like, if we are partnering with another city, that means, and they're coming to our program, they're losing the revenue, you know what I mean, for those kids? And likewise, if we say, well, there's this option here, we're losing the revenue for those kids. So it's kind of like, it's kind of an interesting thing that's happening right now because, I mean, it's been going on for a while, but now with COVID, it's like jumping in and it's, it's kind of competitive for those students to come.
Well, and I had worked with a gal who's, who had her kids, she lived in Hudson, but enrolled at St. Cary Central, so their program.
Yeah.
And so when COVID hit, they were fine. Cause they were home. So the needing to stay home with them, they already had that designed into their schedule, it already worked, it wasn't. I mean, and I, I thought at that time, I'm like, well, that seems like a great idea, but not realizing, I thought more of an online learning thing, not that they had this actual like charter thing set up.
I think with COVID and the hybrid and at-home learning and whatnot, I think pre-COVID, there was a lot of families that maybe saw it as more appealing to see what an online option would be. But I think the families now have all seen it. They've all seen what the other schools have done, districts were able to do. I really believe the overwhelming majority of families say, in school, in front of a teacher, that's where my kid learns the best, that's the best environment for them. And the ones who felt the online wasn't are already somewhere else.
Yeah.
So now to try to bring them off, you know, cling them away from someone else to ours, I think will be difficult. It's, it's competitive.
Yeah.
Ryan, do you have any questions here?
I don't think I do.
So, I'm sorry, I can ask one other one too?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm worried that we all, we think right now it's a distraction. I'm worried that we're maybe being too short-sighted here. I mean, what? And, and I'd be curious to hear from Dr. Stokus as well, like, how much of a risk to, you know, the, you know, of, of not looking at something like this, right? So we're talking about a revenue, right? But how much of a risk if we don't consider doing another level of investigation? Are we, you know, are we going to be behind?
That's kind of where I was going with it. Cause it's, yeah. But also, are we trying to protect what we have as well and not lose, not lose students?
Well, I wonder, then that's where I was just going to step in, but really clear though, is any family that's within our boundaries, if they want to have an online experience, we have those options.
Correct.
So they don't have to go to a K-12 web-based or enroll in any of those. Cause we do have a full continuum and a lot of that is based on the learning that we had, both from our alternative high school program, but also because of COVID. What this would be is opening it up with layers to bring in people outside of the Prescott boundaries.
Correct.
I think we wanted to bring it forward. I don't think it's something that we would say that we completely mothball. But I would say that the urgency would be that if, in order to be, have it in place for fall of 2024, right, we would have to have a lot of work done. I think we'll continue to explore, we'll probably be looking at who's around us, how and why smaller districts are doing it. I think Vicki, you're right, on some of the smaller districts, it's, I have a staff member that might be moving from a point one, point oh, to a point eight or point six, and I want to be able to create something to bring them in. The other one is a risk reward. There's two schools of thought. You put a lot of R and D. As Steve said, is, you know, you, you want to make sure that you're breaking even, but it might be a one or two-year, three-year proposition and do we have the ability to risk that? The other one is you go slow and you only, you might say, we're only going to open it up for ten kids. And then you build it and see if you can get to twenty and thirty. Those are two different schools of thought, something that we would have to investigate. There's other people that have started only elementaries. Right? And so are you going to try to be K-12? I think there are things that we can still investigate and come back. But I think what you're sharing with us is that for us to put all of our chips in the middle of the table and try to pursue this for a fall 2024, it might be a little too ambitious.
I would love to see kind of how many kids, as we have kids leaving right now, going to different schools, kind of the whys. And then how many of our kids are choosing online programs? My experience is similar. It's often not sustained in an online program. They come back and forth. But how, how many, how many kids are we losing because they need that different kind of experience? And I, I, I definitely think down the road it might be a revenue builder, but I'm most concerned about the kids within our communities that we're servicing right now and making sure that we're meeting their needs.
And, and I think one of the things that came up to me is Josh and I were investigating this more is just letting our community know that we do have that ability within our own school boundaries. So maybe there's some homeschool families right now that are purchasing curriculums or even doing an online curriculum that don't know that I could be enrolled at my local high school, have one or two elective classes at the end of the day and be online the rest of the time. And then I'm already here for afternoon sports and things like that. So I think it's more of educating our own public.
I think this is all good information for us right now. I don't think anybody's saying no, nobody's saying yes. I, I agree with the slow approach and if you, if there's time and bandwidth to look into this a little bit deeper and we get down the road and find out that this is a viable option, then we can take a more serious look at it. But I think this was just kind of a break the ice and, and let's, you know, just get it out there. So we, we hear about it. Is there anything, anything else? Board?
Thanks, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to cost updates on grade six to eight middle school, or M I S and grade four, five to middle school facility.
Yeah, so you received a lot of information as we, since August with regards to alignment of priorities between the school board and administration. We have been proposing since August that we look at a great configuration that's in alignment with learning. And over time, we started with policies, we've talked about policies today multiple times. There is a policy that specifically, eleven zero zero, that specifically says that the board recognizes that the grouping of grades and the types of services and programs that are provided, that we should be reviewing that on an annual basis. And to date, I'm just putting up kind of the timelines, the progress and the decision points and explain to you why this is becoming a little bit more urgent. At the time, in early August, we had outlined for you five priorities that we thought were important for this academic year for us to discuss. And with that, we identified that the middle school building was a building that continues to restrict the type of programming that we currently offer, as well as we'll definitely put a restriction and constriction with regards to future programming that we'd like to do. Specifically around STEM, but also with coding, robotics and the ability to provide flexible grouping and special education programming. We have a wonderful building that can serve and host over four grades that currently is enrolling two grades, grades four and five in an intermediate school with a capacity of over four hundred. You're, as a board, you did engage in having a work session and that work session was held in September of twenty, September twenty-sixth. At that time, we went through a full binder and we had information, I got props here. Sue Gertis has been looking at and trying to identify the funding that would be available to us. Oh, I guess I need to cast, sorry. What we've been able to do is provide and examine the facility studies that in twenty thirteen and fourteen, prior to the building and opening of the high school, there was another facility study in twenty nineteen. Both of those were independently done. Both of them had different architectural firms. Both came to the same conclusion and had input from the community. Both of those identified that the middle school facility as it stands is a good viable educational environment, but is probably better situated for two grades. The middle school facility, as we talked about, had hosted up to four grades, but based on current enrollment, probably could host more than four grades. On October nineteenth, we had additional conversations and we had some questions that you had about how we would and or what additional costs to do that. I did give you a lot of granular information, the, since twenty nineteen, our teaching staff and administrative staff has been organizing information about the types of programs that they would like, how they would like our building and learning environment to look like, the academic model we've talked about. Then the board had asked us to kind of frame it as good, better and best. And so you were presented with a folder, every single school, every single grade, and then our specialists. Really what it's coming down to is a pivot with regards to trying to put the right amount of kids in the right buildings so that we can continue the wonderful programs that we have, expand the programs, and we have great academic outcomes to date. When we looked at the costs, you can go as granular as you want, but we have put this together for you to kind of review. And they're different buckets. As you know, public education and some of the comments earlier today, trying to understand how public education and public education funding and finance works is not for the faint of heart. Next year, twenty-three, twenty-four is a question mark. It is the end of the biennium budget. Today's conversations with W A S B and W A S, and policy individuals are saying that don't expect hard numbers from the Wisconsin legislature prior to August of twenty twenty-three. So it's a big question mark, but we do know we will receive money. It's just going to be how we divide it up and where it goes. We have been working on Fund Forty-Six for over five years. We've met the criteria and can now tap into that to put into restructuring and rebuilding our bill, organizing our buildings in a way that meets the programming today and will meet the programming of tomorrow. At this point, we have a fund balance of one point one million dollars. We are proposing that we at least allocate up to fifty percent of that for improvements at each of the buildings so that we can better fit and refine the programming for four, five at the middle school facility and then obviously at the intermediate. We also have been working very intentionally and strategically for this moment. We're talking about implementing, not a decision, but really implementing plans that have been in place since twenty fourteen. The fund balance has grown to six point five million. You do have a board policy that it breaks it into three parts. The first part is that at minimum, we must always have two million dollars as a fund balance. Second, it talks about that we would be able to carry and make and pay our bills for three consecutive months. Right now, salaries is one point two per month. So you know that already, that's not talking about any supplies, utilities, it's just salaries is three point six million. If you go to four, now you're talking, right, just do the multiplication. We are working at this point with Sue Gertis, our coordinator. We believe that we could still stay within the board policy that would allow us three to four months of expenditures. And the difference of the low and the high is that then we would not spend the safety net of the one million dollar loan that we take. But as an example, we have spent up to over four million dollars this school year and have received about less than ten percent of our state and federal aid. So right now we run thin and our next reimbursement is in December and January. Sue is participating in the Baird modeling. We've been using that since she's come aboard. We are looking at scenarios that we would be able to identify what our costs will be based on inflation, but also different scenarios for funding, not only funding for salaries, but also as we talked about the extracurricular activities. So spring will be a very busy time as we will have many unknowns, but trying to organize the budget for next year. At this time, we also know that furniture was going to be an issue. It is something that over the last eight years, we have spent very little on upgrading any of the three buildings with regards to furniture flexibility. If you go in any of our classrooms, in the three older buildings, you will notice that none of the furniture matches. Many of the tables are bowed. It is time for us to start to do that. Sue and I in building the budget for this year, we have put in a placeholder of a hundred and twenty thousand for furniture. Obviously, that will not go far in today's world, but it is a start and it's something that we'll continue to do to make sure that the learning environments are operational, but also flexible based on the way that we teach. Site improvements is another area for Mike Coico's budget. We have dedicated a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, almost a hundred and thirty if you round out. Those dollars are available to us. And then as you look overall, we have about seven point eight million that would be available. We are looking at trying to identify two point seven million that would be dedicated to improvements. And I can share with you two pictures.
Oh, do you want to go? Go ahead. I, I just want, I want to make sure we get a chance to answer a question or talk about this one.
Yeah. So here is a rendering from today's meeting that we had with Mark and Johnson and.
Rick, are you, are you going to jump into like the project itself or like how, what, what, what the costs are going to look like? Cause I, I did want to, I wanted to talk about like the, what that's last slide meant and if there's any questions on it.
I want to come right back to it. So this is the pivot. So this is a floor plan of the, on the far left-hand side are the eight instructional rooms, the gathering space that you heard about and the district office. On the right-hand side is the footprint for the current intermediate school. Dead center is the cafeteria. You then have kind of in the middle of that, I think my cursor wore, is the library and the classrooms. At this point, the biggest pivot are on the, I wonder if I should, I'm not tall enough to point, but on the middle, you'll see blue writing and that they are the two science rooms that are currently not in functional use. You got it? Thank you.
The pointer, the laser.
You just happen to have that with you.
You just carry around a laser the whole time? Yeah, doesn't everybody?
Make sure no airplanes are going down. But right now, what we're looking at is, this is the room that in twenty sixteen was not functional as a chemistry lab. It still exists as a chemistry lab, but it also is the area that has to be completely deconstructed for asbestos. And so it has basically workstations for two students with sinks. The countertops have asbestos, the floor has asbestos. It will be deconstructed down to its bones. What's happening is we're about to go off for bid package two. And what the bid package two is, we can replace like-for-like, if we're going to use these as science rooms at some point down the road, we need to be able to know right now, the plumbing, the pipes leak, the gas has been turned off and the drains are plugged. As they tear all this up, all of the drains will be capped because we don't teach science that way. But we do know that we would need sinks and demonstration areas. So what we wanted to make sure is as we move forward, that when we deconstruct these rooms and then the other science room would be here, that we'd be able to do that while we have construction people onsite and to be able to kind of leverage the dollars in the best way we can with regards to referendum dollars, Fund Forty-Six and your fund balance. The other area but cannot be addressed in the fall, uh, I'm sorry, in the summer of twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, summer of twenty twenty-three is this shop area. This is the old high school woodshop. This is where we had the welding. Currently it is being used by Mike Coica for storage and our trucks. We do have an alternative site. We do have Young Street. It is not centrally located, but it is an area that we could use. It is not currently heated. We do need it to be heated in order for them to work on their equipment. So there's some upgrades that would have to happen to Young Street or we can potentially build. Again, not something that needs to be decided tonight. The last thing I wanted to share with you is just looking at. The last thing I wanted to share with you is just looking at, I have to write, it's a lot of information all at once, but this is our current work schedule. You know that there's some concrete work going on. The bids are going out. Couple things I wanted to point out is this is November of 2023. All of our electrical work, everything that's the electrical panels, the HVAC systems are already ordered, but not expected to arrive until November 2023. We already understand that there will be construction in summer of '23 and '24. What we're looking at is for this spring is to start to remove some of the asbestos in Malone Intermediate School. And so when we start to do that, that's when we know that we have to plug the drains, either replace plumbing, or if it's only going to be elementary classrooms, there would be no need to invest that money there, and then we would move on. But understand that the current STEM room and some of the programming rooms over at the middle school where we said we didn't want to invest in do need upgrades. So it's kind of a catch-22 in order to kind of consolidate this. That goes back to, I think I can go back to the money slide and where the monies would come from in the different buckets and ask what questions, if any, you have at this time, and I'm sure you have many.
Yeah, I just, I, again, I just want to summarize, not summarize this, but make sure the board understands what this, what this represents, and it's just a possible money, where we would pull it from. Does anybody have any questions right off, right off the bat on this?
Yeah, I'll ask a couple of questions. So boiling it down, you're looking at a lower 2.7 million to make this move.
Nah, well, go ahead. You answer that.
I think it's twofold, and I'd have both principals feel free to weigh in. We do know that the moving cost, which would have been part of anything, has been part of the fund balance. We already have a bid is 40,000. That includes the packing, the packing of the classrooms, and also the library, and then also storage, because we do know that there's going to be construction going on. We do know that there are, the current lockers at MIS are not one big enough for middle school students. Currently, if you walk, and I think I shared pictures with you on the, you'll see that in winter, the jackets can't even fit in for elementary, and then add Chromebooks and books for middle school. We already have a bid on that. That would be about another 120,000. The rest of it is really what we think are incremental updates with regards to making sure that we have a viable STEM room that would provide a shop area, a dust-free computer lab for CAD, and then experimental area for kind of robotics and coding as we move forward in future programming. These would be things that I see as kind of up to costs, not necessarily essential costs. We could, and Kyle and Michael could probably speak to that, is that most of the changes would have to be at the intermediate school rather than the middle school facility.
All right, well, I'm going to come back to my question because you didn't answer it. What's, has any of this been covered in the referendum that just recently passed? Or is this all?
It depends on, it can if it's.
So the asbestos removal?
Yes.
Caught your overlap there, yeah.
Yep.
The new floor?
Yes. The challenge would be if you do the plumbing at this time, yes, because we have, in the referendum, it was to make sure that all the plumbing in the classrooms and the pipes in the intermediate school were replaced. The challenge would be is that we're stripping out, and currently the water and gas are shut off in certain areas. We would have to, in order to overlap these and then tap into Fund 46 and fund balance, we would need time to work with our architects to make sure that we can have those workstations and demonstration areas identified.
Okay, so you're, should I take it this way, that your calculations as far as what it would cost for lockers and what it would cost to move are moot unless we do this other stuff? Or could we spend 160 grand, move these grades and live hunkadourly forever after?
Well, I wouldn't say we'd live hunky-dory, but I'll have Mr. Igo and Michael, you want to speak?
Actually, I want to get that. I mean, is this, is there a mix here? Is it either or? Is it, you know, I just, 2.7 million versus 100, you know?
Rick, I really, I want to clarify that 2.7, that, that's the, that's the amount that you could possibly, that's what you're saying is, what we have and all this, all these different pools of money, if we, if we pulled out, you know, every dollar we had, this is the amount of money that we could play with. It's not the cost of the project, or is it? I guess.
Yeah, it, it is not the cost of the project. It is, what I would say, is available to you in order to still have a balanced budget fall 2023, 24.
That's what I want to get at.
Without running us, anything above that, I would tell you, Sue and I would not advocate going any higher than using 2 million.
But this, this is a, this is not what, this is not the information that I need. I, I don't want to know what our max available to spend. I want to know what it's going to cost to do what we need to do.
Right.
And this is not answering that question. This is telling me that we can't spend more than 2.7 million responsibly. Okay, great.
But what we're running into is that your architects and project manager are saying they do not want to make projections and work on this unless they know it's something that they're going to be working on.
Wow, so no one in the industry wants to work with us on this? I mean, I mean, that doesn't make sense.
It's kind of, for them, what they want to know is, we've, we've spent a lot of money in, already investing in plans and design. For them to do anything additional, if it will cost us additional money to get some of this done, and we're trying to leverage having those people onsite at the time. We do need, we can run science in these rooms. It wouldn't be ideal, but we could. The biggest challenge for us will be the STEM, because it was a room that has been completely, is not up to code, doesn't have any of the shop materials, but we knew sooner or later, we have to invest either in the intermediate, I'm sorry, the middle school STEM area is not sufficient for what we currently have and will be overcrowded if enrollment goes off.
Do you need from us just direction on, yes, we're leaning this way so you can start to engage? Like, what do you need from us to get those numbers closer?
Yeah, so the time, part of it is also the timelines. They can give and get informational bids if they knew that this is something, like if we knew, and the work of our science teachers has been, it would help if we matched my screen with what's up on the board. What we're trying to get to is, we know where the science rooms would be if this was going to be a middle school, and trying to serve students in six, seven, and eight. And so there would be cost savings by when they deconstruct this, to be able to make sure that they put in place that that could be a viable middle school science room.
So you, you need from us to know whether or not we're committed to this, including those grade levels?
Right. The actual time of when you would place those grade levels wouldn't have to be made tonight, and it wouldn't have to be fall '23.
So it could be two years down the road. It's just, let's pursue this. We have some money in the budget to do that.
Yes, that's a good way to frame it.
I usually like to know how much things are going to cost before I actually start a project. So I guess I don't understand why this is so difficult just to say, okay, put a few drains here. If we're going to put some drains in, what, $12, $4,000? What? I guess I.
It's because the amount of time, it will take a year just to, according to our architects and working with our staff, to be able to design a STEM area accurately, and also to be able to have different timelines put forward. They don't see that area being able to be constructed until summer of 2024. And one of the things that our staff has been doing is they've been looking at and putting up forward designs, and they want to know, am I designing the space in a future at the intermediate school? Or am I trying to make and adapt in our current environment over at the middle school? Because a fourth-grade classroom is different than a middle school classroom. And Michael, you can probably talk to some of that with regards to the science.
Yeah, so I think what the, the big struggle is, is, okay, so we have the chemistry room, there's all the chemical tops inside of it. One, no chemistry program runs like that anymore, right? It's all microchemistry. We don't need 16 sinks. We need two sinks, right? We need one big demonstration area. The big question is, is like for the intermediate school and specifically that chemistry room, if it's going to stay as a intermediate school, then no sinks go back in, and all of the chemical tops come out, including the storage along the sides. If we know it's going to be a middle school, then we start putting things back so it's a middle school. And what Dr. Cruz is trying to say is, if the move doesn't happen this year, maybe happens a year from now, still, we need to know, is the move going to happen? So then we can plan for that move. And we've been trying to put together good, better, best options, but that also depends on the move. And then like for the intermediate school, we're looking at, we essentially need eight core classrooms, and then we have another seven classrooms that we'll need. We'll need 15 classrooms, plus some specials classrooms that are already in place. That looks different right now in terms of technology that you're going to be putting in. Right now, the middle school technology is on its cycle to be replaced in that building. If we knew the middle school was coming up to the intermediate school, we would only be replacing in 10 classrooms, let's say, not 27 classrooms. So again, that all will factor into the dollar amount because we can save it on the technology part if we know the move's happening, where if the move's not happening, now you're going to invest in 27 rooms, new technology at the middle school.
So if I can recall back to probably last month and the month before, but when we talked about making a decision about grade level moves, one of the things that we were stuck at is, we don't have any idea how much the cost is. And I'm hearing you guys say, we're stuck because we can't get the cost until we know a little bit more. But I, I feel like, I mean, I want to speak for everybody else here, but I feel like I'm still kind of stuck on, okay, when we say good, better, best, it's not, I saw the, I saw the stuff and that, that's great, but I think we're at the point of, how much will this just, I mean, just a general idea of how much this costs? It doesn't have to be perfect. I'm not thinking bids.
I would even, I would even, like a general cost of, what's the bare minimum?
This is good. This is the good, the bare minimum.
What, what do you absolutely have to have in order to move six, seven, eight up to the intermediate school and roughly ballpark, how much is that going to cost, right? That's, I think, yeah, we need to understand.
And then, and then the other side is, we're doing all the things we want to all the spaces, and we're getting, that's a, that, that's the best. And again, like, I don't care if it's like, it could be a big discrepancy in numbers. It's, it's, the thing is, is like, we have to have, we have to be responsible to the public that we can afford this. I can see like, okay, we've got, we've identified where the money's coming from, but we still don't know how much, like, is it 2 million or is it?
Come from.
500, you know?
Better, is it going to go over that? We don't know.
Well, no, because I think it's easy, much easier question. Mr. Igo, could the middle school six, seven, and eight physically move to the intermediate and function next year?
Do I get the shop space or do I not get the shop space?
Currently, as it is.
As, as it sits today and I don't get the shop space, yes, we can do it.
But that's a great question, that shop space goes on to a different cost.
But that's, but that's why I ask, because, because now I'm going to change programming in a program that we currently have, and we're not going to, and we won't offer the same.
Does it make it worse if you move, I mean, would it be better or worse of the same?
It makes it different to the point where we are no longer teaching skills that they would then use at the high school, at the high school or for some of their high school level programs. So does it make it worse? Not necessarily, but it's not feeding into high school level programming that, that they would see.
Are you feeding into it now?
You're talking about one specific class.
We're talking about one specific class in that STEM. In, in STEM, it, it changes programming where they're not building on skills for high school. And are we doing that now? Yes, we're doing that now at a very cursory level.
Okay.
Our STEM, our STEM teacher collaborates on Mondays with the high school CT folks. So, but could we move? Yes, we can move tomorrow and run our classes very, very similar to how we run them now. And we have the added benefit of our hallways being larger, our classrooms being a, a bigger space, being able to fit 220 students into the cafeteria versus 115 at, at very best into our cafeteria.
Because that's the second half of what we're talking about here. The first half was, we had a board statement that said we want to align resources and learning experiences, and the other half was out, this came up out of, I know it came up in 2014 or something, but also it was the necessity of, we are overcrowded, that's a fact. We're at the middle school overcrowded, we don't have space for others.
And now we're at, we're at our point right now. So we're not overcrowded anymore, but we are at our point right now.
Yeah.
And so everything's trade-offs, right? And so we can functionally perform and do a move with six, seven, and eight, and there's a host of benefits, but there are some drawbacks. A fully viable STEM room would not even be conceivable by summer of 2023, but would take a year of programming, I mean, a year of planning and also ordering, working with our staff to make sure that three rooms that are a shop, an experiential, and a computer lab are appropriately placed. That's when we would have better numbers for you, but it would enhance that program to meet how it's currently delivered, but also where we want it to go. It is STEM, it's probably one of the most pivotal pieces. The science ones are pretty minimal. And so for us, right now, what we're looking at is, it's the cost of the move, 40,000.
Lockers.
Lockers.
With locks.
And we do save money on technology. We have purposely run our premium boards to their end of life. And so those are some, those are the trade-offs, is that we will have to invest in technology because we're one-to-one at the middle school.
Rick, so if we don't, if we don't do the move, we're going to have to invest in technology for the other school? That, that's meant for the middle school, for instance, versus if we were to move the middle school, it gets up to the intermediate school?
Correct, because all the interactive boards are a functional, placed, and fully done.
So there's, there's, there's benefits to moving now with technology costs as well as taking advantage of onsite.
And I would even break out exactly when the move comes. It's more about giving direction to continue to pursue the work of the content area teachers, Mark and Johnson and architects to say, if this is truly the direction we're moving, at some point, we, we are declaring that it will be six, seven, eight. We just can't declare if it's going to be fall '23 or fall '24, but you need to make sure that that building is fully operational. That's what we need. If it's fall '23 or '24, we can still come back to that conversation. What I'm asking for is, can we make the call? And I can share with you, if we get all the information on bids are expected to be back by April, so we'll know how expansive and whether or not we're over budgeted or under budgeted, just with the referendum. What I did want to share is what is viable for you to tap into, that we specifically have built Fund 46 so that we could invest in capital improvements. And we know that at this point, we were recommending Sue and I, is you could use all of it if you wanted, we were proposing 50% of it with the other coming out of a fund balance and sharing with you what the ceiling could be before you would run into problems.
So basically, we're at the, yes, go ahead, design it, figure out how those rooms would work as STEM rooms and other science rooms, just the ones where they're abating, the old chemistry rooms, taking all that stuff out, figure out how those work, how to design it. They'll get us the numbers, they'll get us the design, they'll get us the cost, and then if we're at over, I mean, it if we're at over, I mean, if we're too close to the two point seven or over it, or it's not comfortable for us. Then do we just pull back on design at that point? Is that possible?
Yeah, so uh, I think we're closer on understanding that part is that the referendum covers everything other than that STEM room. So it is outside. So what I would need is if this is the direction we would go. I do have to get a bid for our architects to partner with us to do the scope and sequence. Because that's not part of the referendum. The three science rooms are under the referendum. And so that was kind of where I, we will have to spend money to get an answer. But we, if we had a declaration that we are committed, that it's going to become a middle school. That allows all of this to kind of move forward with more granular numbers.
Rick, I got a question. So just like as far as timing is concerned. Do you, you got, you got a couple of numbers on the sheet, on the agenda here uh, with the moving estimate and then the lockers. So there's like a hundred and sixty thousand. Are you looking for us to make, to have an action item next month? To make that decision?
Um, two things. I think it would be a two-stage question. First, are you, would you declare that the intermediate school would be designated as a middle school with six, seven and eight? That allows us then to um, give you and move toward ending up on pursuing different numbers. We could get the lockers done. The move would be contingent on, do you want to move fall twenty three or twenty four? Because, right? So we got a bid, but it's there good for sixty days and we got to lock in. If we don't lock in, then, you know, if we're waiting another year, we can still do the lockers, assuming that's the direction we're going. But if I do lockers and then you decide.
You're just trying to, you're just trying to optimize the time and the dollars as best as we can. And this is what you came up with for now. To that, that we, that we would need to do this, this summer.
Or no? Their time.
Whenever, whenever their, whenever their timeline is.
And it's also our teachers' time, right? Because each one of these, for the most part, um, not a big deal, but we have over four hundred and fifty lockers. We would only, right now, we're looking at three hundred. So it's where do you want to optimize those? Where do you put them? Um, some of the science rooms, it's not a lot, but we do have to bring in teachers to kind of sit down with uh, Mark and Johnson and the architects to kind of identify those.
I guess my, my question is, is how much time does the board have to make a decision here? Do we have more time um, to, to further dive into this and get some more questions answered on, on numbers? Or is this, is this what we have to work off of to make decision?
Yeah, so I'll take it in two, two parallel tracks. Tomorrow, Sue will be in Eau Claire and she'll be working with um, Barrett to kind of identify a better estimate and scenarios about um, how much she would say fits into your uh, fund balance policy. So what we've been able to do without a lot of scenarios is say, the maximum she and I feel comfortable that you could dedicate to this would be two million. The second piece would be, right now, Mark and Johnson, uh, Mike and I have been working on bid package two. They would like to have that out in December, latest January, because they want to have all of their responses back to the board for an open, opening in April. And so this would allow us, one, if we're under budget, makes it easier. If it's over budget, we're going to have to be making cuts to infrastructure. And you're going to have to cover that infrastructure costs out of your fund balance or fund forty six. So in order to get some bids and also um, exploratory, they are um, working. And by December, Mark and Johnson is taking the square footage, three thousand. They're going to give us estimates on the square footage cost so that you would be able to um, at least have a ballpark of what it would take to redesign that current shop. Um, I don't want to guess. The only one I can tell you is if we don't do Young Street and you wanted to build a facility for Mike Koika, it would be somewhere between two fifty and three hundred thousand. Um, that was just done, I think in Spring Valley or um, one of the districts south of us. And uh, that was about the estimate that we were given. It's not essential, but that would be another marker for it.
So trying to summarize or wrap this up, you guys, um, I know there's probably a million questions thrown around in everybody's head. I, I wonder if we should take a step back and wait for some more information to come in and, and get our, get the questions that we need answered. I, I haven't, we haven't seen a cost on anything. I feel we need, we need that, right? That's what everybody's asking for. We need some, some ballparks on good, better, best. We talked about this last month. We need a good, like, what, what is it, what's it going to take to get in there on year one? Whatever, if it's next year, the year after, what is it? How much money is it going to cost? What is it going to take to do the next level and then the, the next level? And until we think we're at like optimal, an optimal learning environment, right?
And we have the good, better, best, but it's very focused on like what's in the classroom and furniture. I think we're talking more, like, that's really granular. I think we're talking more like overall. What's, what's, what do we need for the bare minimum, it's good, it's better than it is right now, kind of move? What is, what's the high end of that?
Yeah, I, it's a catch twenty two though, is that you're stuck with um, kind of trying to identify. Are you giving me clearance to spend more money to get the architects to give you a bid on a STEM?
I challenge they need to do that though. So what's the square footage? Time two hundred fifty bucks. There you go. Done. Um, add seven percent for architectural fees. There's our number. So somebody should be able to put that together and give it to us frankly tomorrow.
And, and they, they are going to have that for you in December.
So I don't know that we need to spend more money with the architects or, or Mark and Johnson to come up with a, at least a, at least a uh, one and two, right? We might not get best. That might require some design work. But we should be able to get some budget numbers very rapidly in order to make another decision.
So STEM room, yes. Other rooms, what do you need?
I think we're talking.
I want to know, I want to know what the costs are above and beyond what dollars are already encumbered for from, from the referendum.
For good, it would only be the STEM room.
Okay. And then better would be what?
Same lockers.
So just, just to put it on the spreadsheet, guys, it, it totals X amount of dollars. And then there's better and we added two more rooms and that's another dollar. And then we can sit down and we can, we can go over it. Because I think where we're at, but I'm not speaking for everybody, it's myself.
And we can, we can have that at the next meeting and like, if, I mean, I feel like you're also needing some sort of decision so you can have some movement and collaboration with who we're already having on site. And I think at the next meeting with that kind of information, we could make those decisions, at least the next step decision.
So depend, depending on timing and everything, I'm just going to throw this out here and just see what everybody thinks. But depending on timing of when the numbers come in, would it be worth doing a workshop if we can get that information and then dive into it in a work session? Or do you just want to try to handle it in the regular monthly meeting?
I mean, I'm hearing that we have through December and January to get back to them. That falls within our regular board meeting time.
So you want to try to dive into this uh, in a regular, in a regular meeting? I, 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 maybe, maybe not answer that right now.
I don't want to dive into what, what column we're going to choose, but the next step that you need.
Yeah.
We can do that.
If we have a simple summary of, of just the high level costs for, for each tier. For the first two tiers, I think is all you're saying. I mean, that's, that's probably enough. Right, that might be enough.
Well, yeah, and I also would need to. I do understand what Rick is saying though. It, it, so if, if you water for twenty twenty three, then, then we need to move beyond, you know, budget numbers, right? So there needs to be final drawings and you need to order stuff. I get all that. So if to come up with a ballpark price should be very, very easy again tomorrow. Somebody, and Mike, so it sounds like if we might need a workshop. If Rick is saying he needs a decision from us prior to January. Or as a board, we say we're not, we don't care about twenty twenty three. Show us the numbers first.
Yeah, again, I, I, I would try to make it a, one would be a declaration that you're moving six, eight. When you make that determination, I can guarantee the STEM room cannot be fully functional until summer of twenty four. We can do partial and we have the costs. That's the other thing we should add is the shop costs. Because it can operate as a shop. None of the equipment uh, left behind meets safety. So we have a STEM room, lockers. The move. Any other costs?
Just put it on the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
I, I proposed that. So the next meeting, we just decided was December, what, twenty fifth?
I hope not. That's Christmas.
Oh, yeah. I was thinking January. December twenty first. Okay. So is that enough time?
Just the cost of making the old science room.
Sorry, guys. I heard the twenty.
Well, and actually, yeah, and that one is a little bit easier because it can fit, most of it fits under the referendum. Right? Because it's all asbestos and all being cut.
Do that.
Yeah.
Yep. So if we make a decision at that next board meeting, December something, is that enough time for you to get back to people?
Yep.
Are we, are we talking an agenda item as a decision or information discussion and come back in January and go? Or do we, do you need, do you need it in December or January?
I think the declaration in December, January or later, you could decide when you want to move. Mike Koika would need to work with the moving company to kind of sign off that we're going fall twenty three.
What does the declaration get us?
It guarantees the price. They're locking in the price, the um, ability to have the trucks.
So we're saying in December, we would, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll invest in this amount of money for, for this, for X and Y?
You're asking us to commit that we're going to go in this direction.
In this direction. That's all.
But not when. It's just saying, yes, we are interested in having this great configuration. And they're comfortable with a declaration.
Yep.
Not a board decision.
Well, I mean, it's a decision.
Forty grand, right?
Right.
Right. The, the moving costs is forty grand, right? And you're asking for a declaration.
For fall twenty three.
For fall twenty three.
Right. If you decide not to move, it'll be more down the road, but you don't have to move.
But if we give you a declar- declaration and, and board, make sure I'm not, not thinking about this, right? You may need to take that declaration with, there's only forty thousand bucks allocated to that move. There might not be anymore, ever, right? But forty thousand bucks makes the move. You're asking for that declaration. And you're, I think with that declaration, then you're willing to accept the risk that there may not be more than forty thousand dollars for whatever the moving costs is allocated to the project.
Well, with the other things that have to be.
The lockers.
Correct. With the declaration.
The lockers.
With the declaration, it comes that it, we know that the old chemistry room is going to be a science room. So part of the referendum dollars, then rebuild tho, that room back up into.
Are we sure?
No, not all of it, but it's not capping the drains. It's not capping the pipes. It's not capping the gas. That, those parts and foundational pieces will still be there someplace. They're not cut off and taken out, never to be brought back again in those two classrooms.
This gets into the minutia, but just to let you know, all of the pipes in the science rooms go under the floor, under the cantilever part. If it's never going to be a science room, there's no reason for us to tear out the pipes and put in new pipes for a potential middle school. But they have to bid on that by January. They have to send those packages out about gutting, putting in new pipes and being ready. If we're not going to do that.
Make it a bid option and, and Mike and Johnson can accept it or not. So go ahead and get your price. You don't have to commit the dollars. Just get the price.
We will, but it, it's, but then beyond that, then it's the planning of the science teachers about where all of this goes. So it's, it's just, all I'm asking for is a commitment that you are agreeing that the six, seven, eight best fits an intermediate school.
So we, I think are saying next month, right? We can have that as an agenda item. We can make that decision. And then it sounds like it's more than forty thousand dollars. There's that column, right? That very first column, the must have.
Not good, must have.
Okay, in order to make that move, we can make that declaration or whatever we need to do next month when we have that information, but we don't have that information right now to be able to make that. But that still lines with what your needs are. It still lines with, you know, the bidding process and all of that.
And know that these expenditures, right? So the must haves to make the move, we can get you that by December. No problem. What we also will know is that as we look at our STEM program, in order to enhance that program or deliver it the way we want, it's not going to happen summer twenty three, it's twenty four. So you're looking at dollars that'll be expended over. And at that point, you can say, we don't have the money because we don't know what the, right? There's a crystal ball. All we're saying is, are we, can Michael Kozmowski and Kyle and the teachers identify what they would like that model to be as money is available for us to build out that program.
So it sounds like we're willing to have an agenda item where we'll consider the declaration with the bare minimum next month. From there, we'll, a business item. Yep. After that, we'll look into, like, everybody's going to do more work and look into the costs associated with the next like level of best or that good. Yeah. And then the next, and we can, yep, make those, and turn those options on as we go. But next month, we'll make the decision about great configuration, declaration, bare minimum dollars.
I've heard a lot from this tonight.
That's because I talked.
Are we good? Clear as mud. I appreciate the dialogue. It's, it's a lot easier. I know it seems discombobulating, but it's, it's a lot better going back and forth. A lot, a lot of Q and A versus, you know, information overload. I think this was very helpful and, and I think it was.
So we're going to get the must have, the better, and then the opposite.
No, no.
Must have.
Which is the bare, which is the bare. Nick, it's the bare minimum required to make the move. Can we move on? You good? All right, let's get on. We're moving on to item D. Reminder, winter weather. Oh, wait.
No.
No.
Jenga.
Don't forget Jenga.
Did I forget something?
No, that's, that's.
Okay, no, yeah, I'm right. It's, it's, it's their winter weather alerts, right?
Yep.
Yep, item D. Thank you. I'm so, now I'm losing. Number D.
Yeah. We use one source forecasting. I tell you if my right knee hurts and then I call school.
Right.
Um, as you know, it's snowed. Um, we've been very blessed uh, that we've made it this far. Usually we talk about this in October. Um, just a reminder, we do have our weather forecasting and uh, rationale for how we close schools. Um, it's always about the amount, the timing, uh, wind and wind chill. So um, we do use the alerts. Um, we do continue to put the information on the local television and KDWA radio. Um, and hopefully we don't have to make a call any, anytime soon. The forecast right now is more about cold weather than it is snow. Um, but obviously safety of our students and staff. There is the opportunity, as we talked about historically, what we've learned is that we do have the ability, especially six, twelve with one-to-one Chromebooks, is that we can do e-learning. Um, and so we, each site is working on that. Remember that our uh, secondary classes do have um, the most number of minutes that are required. So when we call school, there's only so much flexibility I have before we have to make updates. So our goal is to make sure that we're not going into the summer, especially with construction. We do have technology that can take care of that. The intermediate and the loan are uh, more than safe on instructional minutes. Anybody have any questions on the snow alerts?
You sure? All right, we're moving on. That's a good job. Item E is the school board election candidacy announcements and timelines.
And birthday girl, do you want to come forward and talk through? Do you want me to cover it? All right. Um, just to let you know, uh, the, it's the last Monday in November. Is that accurate? I got one thing right tonight. All right. So the last Monday of every uh, in November is uh, the deadline for us to have a type A notice that there is an elec- the deadline for us to have a type A notice that there is an election, a seat that is up for election. We do have a five-member board, so usually there's two people, but then every once in a while, there's a one seat. So right now, uh, Steve's seat is up for election in April. That notice is sent, or me? Second of November. Yep. And that goes into the paper. Yep. And that has been sent. Maria has done that. And then, um, we do, the earliest anybody in the community can, um, identify that they're a candidate is December first. The last day they can identify that they would be a candidate is January third. Um, we are closed during winter break and reopen on January third. January second is the holiday that's honored for New Year's. So on the third, Maria will be in the district office till five o'clock. There is a doorbell at door four and anybody that would want to enter into the district after all the, the doors are locked can, uh, use that, um, in order to, um, get in and submit their papers. There are a lot of tasks that go with it, both on, um, kind of the nominations and things like that. But the election then occurs um, in April and they are seated in May, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay. Right. That is a special event for specifically for candidates. Correct.
Glassed over board. Do you got any questions?
I got, I got one thing in. So, um, the ward clerk pops up in here a lot and that is the district clerk, not the school board clerk. Correct?
Well, in your policy, it is you. So, um, there are certain things that are also, um, administratively delegated in the policy to Maria as the acting liaison between the board. But as a reminder, there are some forms that the clerk has to sign that if he didn't sign yet, Maria has.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Okay, we're going to move on to item ten, recognition of visitors. Anybody in the audience left that would care to be recognized? Come on up.
If it's an easy one.
Hi, it's Janet Cleary. Um, in listening to you talk about all this stuff and being in the intermediate school, we get a lot of talk amongst the seniors. I just have a, maybe a stupid question and very bad time to bring it up, but you were saying, does the STEM program start in seventh grade? So why are they not moving, putting fourth, fifth and sixth in the intermediate school and leaving seventh and eighth grade down there and remodeling what's needed down there?
I'll follow up. Yeah, that's.
We've been talking about that exact question.
Thousand hours, so.
Okay. Well, it just, you know, if, there's so much talk about getting buildings upgraded stuff. And, and then my other question was, you talk about the intermediate school and is there, I remember when it was the high school and they took out the music room to make more room for everything else. And how are you going to support the other programs as even, even as a junior high? Is there going to be a spot somewhere for drama and music? And all I hear talk about is STEM, 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 STEM. And I know that's important.
Yeah. And just, do I have permission just to at least share clear? So the middle school currently, um, the STEM room is not sufficient for what they do. We also are limited in some of the fine arts.
Yeah.
Coming over six, seven and eight, our middle school model has been thr- uh, thriving. So if we moved four, five and six and kept them at the intermediate school, it would change all of our sixth grade programming.
Right.
They would lose opportunities. They would lose band.
Right.
They would lose, uh, science. So what we're trying to do is make sure that our grade test scores and the programming that we have.
And, and the current middle school is the oldest building, so it makes sense to, there's more room at the intermediate, intermediate school for students. Yeah.
And one of our goals would be to make sure that we had more spaces for things like choir and band and stuff like that. So those would be addressed.
And can you correct the number on the lockers? I thought I heard you say four hundred lockers? There aren't that many students in the middle school. Are you looking at?
No, no. In the current intermediate, intermediate school, the old high school, there are four hundred lockers.
There's currently that many there?
Yeah.
You don't need that many for.
Right. And so we, we are tearing them out and replace them with three hundred.
Oh, okay. That's, I thought you were replacing them with four hundred. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah. Because I walking by today and seeing those little lockers and the snow pants and everything hanging outside, the boots outside. Oh, yeah. What a mess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We shall take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carrie's, thank you.